The Board of Trustees for the Pasadena City College District come to order, please. In closed session this evening, the Board voted to terminate Dr. -- excuse me, Mr. Don Yoder, and the vote was Ms. Brown, Dr. Mann, Dr. Salvage, Dr. Fellow voting in the affirmative, and Ms. Wa and Mr. Martin voting in the negative. Mr. Martin, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Gladly. You'll please stand. Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to, at this time, move on to action item F1, which deals with the Integrated Planning Initiatives, the 2014-2017 Board Goals for the college, and then we will come back to public comments because Trustee Martin must leave early this evening. So, Mr. Martin, are we going to have a presentation first, then?
Yeah.
We're going to finish this item now.
Oh, you don't want to look at it?
No, hang on one second. I think that what we could do, Ryan, is if you want to just do your very brief slides on the Board Goals, and then we can have Trustee Martin make his comments, and then we can go from there.
Absolutely. I will be brief, just to be cognizant of your time. So, the Board Goals are a little bit different than what they've been in the past. First of all, we are focused on three-year goals, but they will follow an annual review so that they fit with the procedures of having annual Board Goals. This was done just to make sure that we allowed appropriate time to implement the actions that we have planned. They focus on student success, collegiality, social justice, community engagement, and institutional effectiveness. I'll go through these very quickly, but in student success, we have focuses on expanding the pathways, offering innovative and student-centered offerings, and enhancing student services. In collegiality, we have promoting trust and a shared vision and effective communication, something we will see reoccurring when we discuss the self-evaluation results from the Board -- self-valuation, enhance systems of participatory governance, and re-engaging the college community. Under social justice, we have providing support to under-prepared -- underperforming students, and we have working with community partners to serve the unique needs of different student populations. For community engagement, we're focused on strategic communication, once again, a topic that will come up later when we discuss the Board's self-evaluation plan, increasing outreach to the community, including international philanthropic and business partnerships, and building a college-going culture throughout the community. Lastly, under institutional effectiveness, we're looking to enhance the college's system-wide integrated planning, which also relates to finishing our technology master plan and our facilities master plan, implementing action plans identified in the accreditation self-evaluation, which will be presented later by Stephanie Fleming, and enhancing the college's fiscal integrity by linking resources and planning together. With that, I'll be open for questions.
And if I may add quickly that these Board Goals were developed by staff looking at our educational master plan and based upon some of the updating of that plan. The Board Goals and the President's Area Plan become the driving documents to achieve the goals within the educational master plan. This, as Dr. Coroner mentioned, is a three-year Board Goal Plan with benchmarks along the way, as the document that is in your tab indicates. We are certainly open to anything the Board wants to say about this, and then, once we are done with this activity tonight, we will then go back through our shared governance processes and finalize all these documents, once we have the Board's direction as to the direction that they want us to go.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martin, you had some comments.
Well, I appreciate that. And again, just to inform the public, I have a standard work commitment on Monday evening, so I will be leaving early, and I appreciate this opportunity. First and foremost, I wanted to compliment the entire staff on the way they have worked on the goals and the action plans, the way you came up with the simple picture, the way it all coordinates with the Ed Master Plan. By and large, I'm very impressed with the clarity and simplicity and integration of these documents, so nothing but kudos there to everybody on campus that worked on it. I have one primary concern, and then a couple of small points. My one primary concern, I'm actually impressed with the five main goals that have kind of gravitated to the top, but I do believe that they should be resequenced. Certainly, number one, student success, but I would think that goal number four should really be goal number two, and that is community engagement. And goal number five, if I get it right here, I would suggest -- help me find goal five again.
Institutional effectiveness.
Should be moved to goal number three. In some ways, goal number two, collegiality, is really a subset of institutional effectiveness, but in the obvious campus climate and things, I think it's fine having it as its own goal. But as a priority, I would say student success and campus, the community engagement, the institutional effectiveness, and then collegiality and social justice. And there may not have been any priority in the numbering, but I'd sure feel better seeing them listed that way. My other comments are, I appreciate in goal four, the dual enrollment is one of the community engagements. I think that's sensational. I would add a D under goal four that says, "Work collaboratively with local, public, and private high schools as part of community engagement." I mean, if there's one thing we want to engage in the community, it's the local, public, and private high schools, and I think PCC has been making some success with that. Under institutional effectiveness, again, I'm very impressed with all of this. I think something that PCC is facing as we move into the new technology delivery systems is a way of thinking more in terms of flexibility. That was a topic that came out in the master plan presentations by the three master plan architects. I don't really have a language for that, but under number five, if there was an E, I would suggest that the college think of how we can be flexible in our delivery systems for students so that we can, you know, reach students more effectively. I'd like to compliment the idea that came out in goal 3B about having a Rosemead Advisory Group. I think that's a sensational idea. We know we're on a lease here. We know that not only are there local needs for the local area, but we also need to build ground support for when the leases start to come due. And again, those of us that had the opportunity to listen to all three master planners present plans, I think all three planners, for sure two, identified the tremendous success of Rosemead and that the potential success for something similar, particularly in the northwest area, particularly, at least two of them identified South Pass, and one, at least one identified Arcadia. So, we might think about not just where we currently have satellite opportunities, having Advisory Council, we might think of having an Advisory Council that helps us in the formulation of some of the needs that would best be identified at a satellite campus, in some of the areas where master planners have identified there would be some success for that. So, we may think in 3B of expanding that. I think those were -- I think those were pretty much all my thoughts on the Board Goals, and I appreciate you getting in just in time before I have to leave.
The only thing I would disagree with you is I believe institutional effectiveness should be the second goal, and community engagement the third goal, because we're talking about resources of the college and revenue enhancements, but that's my opinion.
I'd be happy either way.
Dr. Mann.
Dr. Mann.
Yes, I have some suggestions. In the Board Goals, I don't even see it, but in the President's Area Goal listed under "Other" is a goal which has been one of the trustees' number-one goal for several years, which is, "Develop methods for ensuring that all in district students are able to enroll in full-time units leading to degree certificate or transfer curriculum completion." I think that should be either in student success, or it could even be in community engagement, but I think trustees, four years ago, identified that as a primary goal, and it should not be tacked on and identified as "Other." So, I would be either under student success or under community engagement. I think we need to be right up front with that one, because maybe since we're doing it, we don't need to think it's a goal, but I think we want to make sure it's a goal. And the other concern I have is with the social justice goal. I don't care where you put it, but I think it is incomplete. So, I would like to suggest that under social justice, we should also, rather than just work with community partners, we should have a goal to recruit and retain a diversified faculty and staff to serve the needs of all the partners in the community. We should, number two, have a curriculum which presents the experiences of different cultures, and, number three, we should have programs and activities which meet the needs of our different cultures in the community. And I think if all we have here is just work with the community partners, that is very inadequate. We need to look at the faculty, we need to look at the curriculum, we need to look at the programs that are on campus if we're really interested in social justice. And if not, we should take it out, and we could put those points under something else.
Well said, Dr. Mann. I also would recommend that your first point be put under student success. I think it fits very appropriately.
Yeah, about the faculty, yeah. I mean, I don't care exactly how we do it, but we need to really focus on this, and I hope we can work with the faculty to do these. These are all things that are in the faculty's purview, but this is really, really important. And if I could just make one other comment, I'm not going to say this for my report. I did attend the session on fostering student success today by Dr. Vindon, I think is the way you pronounce her name, and there could not have been anything clearer when we heard from our students and students at Sini, University of Texas in San Antonio, as how important it is when a student comes into a classroom that they see someone that they can identify with culturally. And I think that is, we need to put that, that is a key component of student success. So, it could go there, it could go under social justice, but it needs to be somewhere.
Thank you. Further comments?
Yes. Right, I'd like to heartily agree with Dr. Mann's first point. Access to classes by in-district students is very, very important to my constituents.
Thank you.
So, the administration appreciates this input, and we will move forward in support of the Board's wishes.
Mr. Lillis?
Just one really minor thing. So, when I was looking at this, I didn't realize that people were looking at it in a tier system of importance, so when they're like, "Oh, so that wasn't the intent," but I think now that's the way they want to go, so maybe if we numbered them, because that's not how I read it.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion at this time to, the staff will take into consideration what we've just said, and--
Wait, I think, Ryan, did you have something to say?
If I may, I'd just like to synthesize really quickly to make sure that I have all the needs of the trustees met. I have a reordering suggested by Dr. Fellow that Mr. Martin said was okay of student success, institutional effectiveness, community engagement, collegiality, and social justice.
Correct.
I have, in addition, of an item related to recruiting and retaining a diverse staff and faculty, most likely under social justice. The in-district goal was already in the President's Area Plan. Was it the intent that that would also be under?
Yeah, I think, Ryan, if I may, I think we took copious notes of what they've wanted, and I think I'm clear on that. I think that we can respond--
That is a trustee's number-one goal. It should be with the trustees' goals.
You got it.
Yeah. I think we're pretty clear on this.
Priority for the in-district students.
Yeah, I think we're very clear. We can make these adjustments and move forward.
May I ask something quickly? I know that we started this in-district priority registration maybe a couple of years ago. Is there a way we could get a report on our achievements?
Do we have a motion?
We don't have a motion, I don't believe.
So, I would move to approve this, approve the Board Goals with the amendments, and then Trustee Brown is asking for a report after.
We just need a second, and then we can--
Do we answer you?
I was going to say the answer is yes.
She's going to, yeah, they're going to provide it, so he just needed to get it approved, and then they'll provide the report, is what Dr. Miller is saying.
Are you satisfied?
Is that okay? Is that okay? Trustee Brown?
I'm thoroughly satisfied, yes.
Okay, I will--
We're going to do it.
So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Board Goals with the priorities that have been set and the information that provided by Dr. Mann--
And Mr. Martin.
And Mr. Martin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. Thank you. We're going to go back to the public comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Wa, do we have any?
I do not have any.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the regular minutes of the business meeting for November 5th.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Ms. Brown. I will second that motion. For the discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. We now turn to approval of consent items. Is there any item that the trustees would like more information? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I would like to have further discussion on consent item B, B150186, the Ralph Anderson contract.
Okay. Do you want to address that issue?
I think maybe Trustee Wa can indicate what her question is. You said more discussion, is that what you wanted?
Right, I don't want, I would like to pull this under consent approval and wait to hear the presentation on the presidential search from Mr. Aderberry or the search consultants under Ralph Anderson. I've had a chance to look at the contract. I think there are a number of questions I have regarding this contract, and so, before approving, I would like to be able to ask those questions. But I would like to wait to hear what their presentation is.
We will pull that, and we'll take it up when we get to that.
I also have a request from, let's see, from the public on the agenda item, I think, regarding the presidential search.
We're not there yet.
And just for clarity, if I may, President Fellow, Trustee Wa was referencing an item in consent item 83B. It's our contracts log, and specifically, she was discussing item B150186. So, the Board, if it so chooses, could approve all other contracts in 83B and just hold that one item back. Is that acceptable?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, except for that issue.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Ms. Brown. I will second that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. We will now turn to the further action items dealing with the Integrated Planning Initiatives under F, and number two is the 2014-2015 Proposed District Legislative Agenda.
So, while Dr. Coroner is making his way up to the podium here, we'll do a more proper introduction. Dr. Coroner is our Associate Vice President of Strategic Planning and Innovation. Dr. Coroner and I, as well as several staff members, as well as board members, have worked very diligently on items F1 through 4, and we've been doing this now for several months, so we are now here to present these items to you. In your binders, under Tab F, and then Tab F1, 2, 3, and 4, is both the brief PowerPoint slides that Ryan is going through, plus fully printed documents for each one of these items. The Board has had this in their packets they received on Thursday, or Friday night, I should say, so they've been afforded an opportunity to review all these documents.
And, Dr. Coroner, we'll go through each of these individually and vote on them individually, so why don't we begin with number two?
Sure. Well, just thank you for allowing me to present these. I had actually prepared everything in one document, but we will go piece by piece. Just to give you a brief overview of where we are at, so that when Dr. Miller begins to present his President's Area Plan for Information under item M, this is our planning sequence as a college, with the college mission, the educational master plan driving all planning agendas. Today, what we've been talking about specifically are the area plans related to the President's Area and to the Board Goals. The reason I circle back around to these Board Goals is what you're going to see is an alignment between many of the topics that we're discussing, beginning with the Board Goals. I will go ahead and cycle through these real quickly, since you've already voted on the Board Goals, just to mention that later, under item M, the President will be presenting his area plan. This is one of the three area plans that is developed every five years in an effort to operationalize the educational master plan and to prioritize the items in it. And it really has a reciprocal and iterative relationship between the Board Goals and the President's Area, where you see a full alignment. As an example, the alignment here does show the incentivizing programs that seek to support underperforming students, and some programming elements related to accelerating basic skills progression, promoting cross-functional activities, and developing an appreciation and understanding of racial, cultural, and ethnic differences in the formation of one's national identity. So, onto the legislative agenda. The Legislative Advocacy Committee has met and reviewed the plan for our legislative agenda going forward through the years. It first begins with the discussion of what the Board's role is in legislative and advocacy issues, and from the CCLC and best practices, we see it's to represent the public interest, to serve as an advocate on many issues, including ways to advocate for more funding and programs that can actually help serve our students, and promoting changes at the local, state, and federal level. Our particular Legislative Advocacy Committee has key purposes that focus on three areas, enhancing relationships with our local and federal legislators, because we know these are the people who can help make the changes that we seek in order to help our students succeed, to advocate for legislative change on our own, which you will see as we progress through with our agenda, and to examine proposed legislation that's coming from state and federal level, and decide whether or not we want to have a formal resolution on those areas. The focus of the legislative plan for this year are on these areas. Increasing funding for unfunded mandates. This could involve a look at the allocation per FTS or other alternative methods that the Chancellor's Office is promoting in order to make sure we have the funding to meet our needs. Increasing student access, which, under this heading, you'll see dual enrollment. Incentivizing innovative and effective programming, which is where a lot of the advocacy comes in for promoting grants and opportunities for us to have diversified funding. The ability to build needed facilities, which involves the promotion of the state's 2016 bond and other potential venues to grow our facilities. Increasing our CTE programs. Participating in the decisions related to performance-based funding. As an example, the most current plan would indicate that PCC would only have a 1.1% growth, which is below what we were expecting, and we should be active participants in that discussion to make sure that the needs of our students and of our communities are being satisfactorily addressed. And lastly, supporting recently passed legislation, such as the ones allowing community colleges to offer bachelor's degrees or those related to foster youth. The last component of the legislative agenda is to actually evaluate our relationships with our two lobbying firms to make sure that we are actually getting what we'd like out of those relationships.
The, I would ask Dr. Mann if she would like to comment further on this. We, the Board's Legislative Advocacy Committee is Dr. Mann, Trustee Thompson, and Trustee Wa, and we had some preliminary presentations and discussion about this legislative plan, and what you see in the document is, has been vetted by that group, discussed by that group, modified as a result of those discussions. Dr. Mann?
I think this is, you know, an accurate representation of our discussion. Trustee Martin did ask that we include Senator Hernandez on this list, because he is the senator for his district, and I told him we would add Senator Hernandez.
Absolutely.
I don't know what district that is. And with that, I think that this is a pretty full agenda, and I would like to comment that I make usually this time of year. In January, we will go to Sacramento, to the League's Legislative Seminar, and we invite all the trustees to go, but this is a working meeting. If you go, we expect you to go with us and meet with our representatives and government officials and present these points. And the same thing in February, we will also, some of the committee and other people, other trustees, will be going to Washington, DC, but again, this is also a working meeting. And particularly in Washington, DC, those of you who've been there the last two years, know we have a very full schedule, and that we meet not only with our elected representatives, but with officials in different governmental departments, and we, it is not a time where you get to just kick back and have lunch and, you know, go shopping. This is a working trip. So, I'd like to, it's good to have the trustees to go. We traditionally invite the student trustee. We find students are very, you know, very effective in lobbying, but whoever goes, we will be working people hard.
And, Dr. Coroner, and I will be arranging opportunities for the consultants to be speaking to the Legislative Committee regarding our January agenda as well as the national agenda. And in fact, we might get Mark McDonald down here prior to the January meeting and have that conversation as part of the McCallum Group. So, maybe--
Good. If there's no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda.
Then move second.
We have a motion from Ms. Wa, second from Dr. Mann. Further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. Action number three, under the Integrated Planning Initiatives, is the Board Self-Evaluation Action Plan.
So, thank you. This is based on the work done at the last Board meeting with the direction that was given by the Board on staff putting together a firm plan. What this Self-Evaluation Plan focuses on is a recognition for improving communication, improving procedures to enhance the information provided directly to the Board, and enhancing relationships between the Board and campus constituencies. What we have here are a few key points. The first is strategic conversations, which is the plan put forward by Donna Miller, and we base this on the plan that she has in her district. And the essence of the strategic conversations is to have a committee on campus that would work on developing informal but planned events where the Board could communicate with constituencies, such as faculty, staff, and students, in a way that is less formal but still structured on policy-related issues. Presented in the plan are the key areas that this would focus on, with the goal of having the first strategic conversation actually occurring in spring and have them ongoing after that. One of the big benefits of this would be that constituent groups would be able to request, if they had an item that they would like discussed during these strategic conversations, but they would be confined to policy issues. In addition to that, there was a request that the Board have a subcommittee that would review and revise as needed the Board policy and ethics, pardon me, the Board protocols and ethics policies. This was something suggested at the last meeting. In addition, review and implement the processes for Board policies related to communication, including the way Board members have meetings with campus constituent groups, improving feedback during the Board's self-evaluation process, consistent processes for employees to representing themselves at Board meetings, and distributing Board summaries through public relations. In addition, it was requested that legal counsel be involved in this to make sure that we follow all Brown Act related to those items. In addition, the Board officers and staff will work to evaluate the processes for updating the Board on important issues. This would begin with at least having a separate meeting related to approving the budget, which was suggested by Trustee Fellow, and the discussion of whether or not there needs to be subcommittees on other important areas of Board work, or whether or not we just need to have more streamlined processes to allow the Board to get the information they need to vote on these different items. So, this would be an iterative conversation to make sure that the Board is able to get the information they need. Lastly, professional development. Brown Act workshops will be hosted. Staff would arrange these. The request was that the Brown Act would be hosted not just by a legal person, but also by somebody who is a practice-based person who knows how to implement Brown Act in the community college, and that this would be not just for the Board, but also for all campus constituents. Donna Miller will also be asked to come back in order to talk about effective communication and running effective Board meetings. Lastly, and this will lead to the final item, is it was suggested that the Board review and approve a Board orientation or education plan.
So, I'll just add quickly that this began, of course, with the Board's self-assessment. We had Donna Miller here, working with the Board at the last meeting. It was requested by the Board that we put together-- It was requested by the Board that we put together what is Item 1.3 under Tab F, or I should say, Item 3 under Tab F, which is Draft Board Self-Evaluation Action Plan. And so what Dr. Coroner just did is he went over the bullet points within that plan. We would ask the Board to approve this plan, and then Dr. Coroner, I, and other members of our staff will begin to implement it, working with the Board.
I hope that will be right at the beginning of the year.
Yes, it'll be very, very quick.
For the beginning of the year, right now.
For the beginning, yeah. Exactly.
That's it?
Were you going to?
Yeah.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, or a further discussion.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Waugh, second from Ms. Brown, for their discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. The final item, under this heading of Integrated Planning Initiatives, is the Board Orientation Education Plan.
Thank you. This Board Orientation Plan is a little bit different than what has been seen previously. The biggest aspects that are different are, first of all, that it is ongoing. It focuses on working with the Board to determine what the education needs are, and staff providing the professional development opportunities and training that are requested by the Board to make sure that they feel that they are getting all the training that they want. The other big difference is that it also allows for the training to begin prior to somebody becoming a trustee in our district. It will start with hosting forums for potential candidates to describe the general functions of the college and the role of the Board. From all best practices, it's become clear that the Board orientation should begin prior to the election, so people really know what they're getting into. This would also involve inviting them to come see a meeting, so that they can see the work that you all do, at least in public, and get a sense of what the tasks related to being a trustee are. It would also provide detailed information, which is listed in the actual plan, from the CCLC, Community College System and Board Functions Packet, to all candidates, so that they can see from a professional source what those roles would be. Lastly, the college would give all planning documents to the candidates, once they actually declare their intent to run, so that they can see the way that the college plans and its shared governance processes. Once somebody is elected, the new trustee orientation would go through several components, but with a focus on giving the roles and responsibilities related to being a trustee, and then orienting them to the college itself. This would involve looking at the governance structures, the administrative functions, and also, and shared understanding of the Board operations and Board norms. The Board plan really focuses on the incumbent trustees as mentors, to be able to really show the way a Board should function as new members come in. The new trustee education will include an orientation packet, which has all the items that were originally listed in the trustee education policy. It would involve a heavy recommendation for enrollment in the CCLC Effective Trustee Workshop, and for continued enrollment in those trainings that are put on by the CCLC that I know Dr. Mann has mentioned on many occasions. It would involve a mentor program, so that incumbent trustees can educate new trustees on the Board role, and how we function here within our district. And it would involve a campus visit that would allow new trustees to interact with all the constituent groups, and get a sense of what the different leaders at the table are. During an orientation study session, there will be a college roundtable, in which the key areas around the campus would bring in their managers to present what the functions of those different areas are, and give an overview of the campus operations. There would be a presentation on the state of the college, which would include accreditation, where we are at, so for our next election, it will probably be the results of what we're working on right now. In addition, issues related to the budget, to the Student Success Scorecard, and the general success of our campus. It will go into college governance and the Board, which would include a training, in brief at least, on Brown Act, and then allow for some time for the Board members to meet independently, without staff, so that they can develop Board norms and learn how to operate as a group. Lastly, that focus should also allow them to create ongoing education. Suggested in the draft Board Education Document are areas that would be important for ongoing education: Brown Act, shared governance, accreditation, college finance, ethics, student success, and any other items listed by the Board. These are just suggestions, and it is the idea of the plan that the Board would work as a unit to determine what they want to be educated on, including the new trustees. But these are certainly key items that we would suggest being on an ongoing basis.
So, you look under Item F4. This is where the draft, the new trustee education plan is. This is the first time that the district, at least in my memory, has codified to this degree this extensive of a Board education plan, and also one that anticipates the need to orient those who might be considering running for Board, and then, once they're elected, having a very solid process to get them oriented.
I think, Mr. Savage, Dr. Savage, did you have something to say?
Oh, there was something you just mentioned about Board meeting to go over Board procedures or something. What was that point that was mentioned?
The Board norms and Board protocols.
Not Board protocols.
I didn't quite understand what you were driving at.
At the end of the orientation session, there would be time for the Board to operate similar to the way you did during your retreat, where you could work as a group to develop how you will communicate and operate as a group, and what norms you would like to use as you lead as a whole unit.
But I thought, you're talking now about the Board, but I thought this was the new trustee orientation.
This is the new trustee orientation, but part of the new trustee orientation is a reliance on the incumbent trustees to help educate the new trustees as to what those norms should be.
As we have educated you. Ms. Brown.
So, my question, this is actually very good. And I agree with Dr. Miller, this, we've not seen it, but I still have to say, unless you identify a group or a person, it won't happen. And I'm particularly addressing right now the candidate education and the forums, because I remember the only forum I saw here was hosted by the students. So we need to identify what body, who would be the ones that will take care of this.
I think it's, to be honest with you, I think it was appropriate, the students, I don't think the college should do political forums.
Well, what I would, my general response is that, once we have approval on the plan, the Office of the President, which includes Dr. Coroner's operation, would take on the responsibility of implementing the plan. So, to the extent that there is a need to orient candidates, we would orient them to the workings of the college, not take any kind of a political position. We would invite them to come, and we would help them to understand, as I think Dr. Coroner mentioned, what they're going to get into, and what it really means to be a trustee of the Pasadena Area Community College District.
Yes.
So you're saying that his office will be responsible?
Yes. His office reports to the Office of the President, so the Superintendent President would be, would be turning to Dr. Coroner's office and staff to help implement this.
Trustee Fellow, I mean, Ms. Brown, the Board policy says the President is responsible for the orientation of the new trustees. That is the Board policy that we approved a couple of meetings ago. And so the President then can do it however he or she chooses to do it. So if you want to have this office do it, that's okay. But it's clear the responsibility of the President of the college.
We would work this plan.
Well, I'm not addressing the new trustee, I'm addressing the candidate.
That's part of the.
That so far is not a trustee.
But that's part, that's part of the, that's still part of the orientation.
All right. I want to make it clear that you're not going to, you're not going to have debates or forums for candidates.
No, sir.
Okay.
No.
Because it's really not in your preview.
No.
It's not in the university college's preview.
Confused.
You can't have, a college can't really sponsor a debate of candidates.
This isn't a debate.
It has to be, or even a forum. It has to be the student trustee, if students can, but.
Please help me understand.
Not the administrators.
Let me see if I can clarify. The intent of this document, and the intent of the Office of the President, for as long as I'm occupied, is we would be engaged in orienting candidates to the responsibilities of being a trustee, and nothing, nothing more than that, and helping them to understand what their obligations are in that regard.
And to be clear, the forum actually occurs before they declare as candidates. It's for potential candidates, so there wouldn't be any need for a debate, or anything related to the politics of it, because it would be during the open filing period.
And during all elections, the Office of the President is Switzerland. You know, we're neutral. We don't take any positions on anything other than that provide information and support.
In other words, the community is the one that hosts debates and forums.
Absolutely.
And the city of Pasadena, for example, the city clerk, I think, has such an orientation. Anyone who's interested in running for city council or mayor, there's a presentation, they can come, they can find out what it involves. That was, at least was my understanding, was something comparable to that, but it'd be done by the Office of the President.
Just one point here. Candidates' education. Host forums for potential candidates to describe the general function. So, that's, I'm caught up.
Trustee Brown, that's a misstatement, that's a misstatement in our documentation.
Thank you.
And we apologize for that.
It's really the orientations.
It's the orientation section. So we'll correct that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, I'll accept them.
There's one over there. Dr. Savage?
Right. The, let's see, we have the orientation study session. The next part of this is the ongoing new trustee education, which is, you know, annual for any trustee, I assume, but I think we should have an additional step in between, still for the new trustees, in which we acknowledge that the new trustees need to have the opportunity to be more thoroughly briefed on particular areas, and, you know, by, well, for instance, aid, student aid. I came into this job not knowing much about student aid. It would be very, very beneficial if I were after, you know, the sort of the general introduction and all that, where there are, you know, 15 other topics covered, to get material on student aid, study it, come up with some questions, and then be given a meeting with somebody who can answer questions, so that when student aid comes up here, and I'm presumably going to vote on a policy matter relating to student aid with people that have been on the Board for 30 years, in some cases, that I'm sufficiently up to speed, or in, you know, any number of other areas.
I think we could easily add some language that indicates that, should individual Board members, whatever their tenure, request additional information on given topics, that it would be the responsibility of the Office of the President, through whomever he or she determines to provide that orientation, or that additional information.
It's also in here, the Associate Vice President of Student Affairs, as an overview of the services offered to students, one of which would be financial aid. So, I mean, I think that's, and then they would be kind of a general overview, and if you had more questions, more specific details, it could be given.
Okay, good. Any further comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
We have a motion from Ms. Waugh. I'll second that motion. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with student trustee voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, and you can check one item off of your self-evaluation plan list now.
Thank you. That's nice.
Thank you, Dr. Coroner.
Item number, action item G, tonight is the Institutional Effectiveness Required Chancellor Scorecard Report, under G.
Yes, I'll ask our Institutional Research Director, Crystal Khoras, to come up and do a brief, brief comments and presentation, and then we would ask the Board to accept this document. Is that correct, Crystal? Yes.
And while Kristin, while she comes, can I ask a quick question? Please, please. I just wanted some clarification on the number of students. Is this head count? You have 33,062. Are those head counts?
Yes. Yes.
So that includes part-time and full-time students?
Correct. And that's an annual head count?
Thank you.
And body?
Individual heads.
Yeah.
And body?
And bodies, yes. Their bodies came on.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I'll just keep sliding.
Okay, thank you very much. Tonight, I included in your packet as kind of a preview, a little bit of an overview of each of the indicators, but I'll just give you a quick background. I always like to run you through this, so you remember where this came from. This started in 1998. It was called, at that point, PFE, the Partnership for Excellence. At that time, they were concerned with, they gave us numbers on completion, remediation, and course-level success. And then along, in 2007, they changed that, and it became ARC, Accountability Reporting for Community Colleges. And they changed some of the indicators to be completion, remediation, they added persistence, and they added course-level success for CTE courses. And then in 2013, along came the Student Success Scorecard, which is very focused on completion and what we call momentum points to completion. So I'm going to cover tonight the indicators: SPAR, which is Student Progress and Attainment Rate, and the Career Technical Education Completion Rate, which is a new indicator last year. Prior to that, we only looked at CT in terms of successful course completion of CTE courses. Now they actually look at attainment of degree certificates of transfer in CTE, and then the momentum points, persistence, 30 units, and remediation. I tried to be a little clearer for you this year, to show you that when the cohort started and when the cohorts ended. So what I have on the screen now is I have the SPAR rate, Student Progress and Attainment Rate, the five-year trend, completion by gender, and completion by age. And as you can see in the completion by gender, our females are slightly ahead of our males, and the overall college average is somewhere in the middle there. And then our completion by age, we can see with the green line there, which I have to go look up, because my eyes aren't that good anymore. The green line represents the, I believe those are our students who are 20 or under years of age.
That's correct, yeah.
Is that right? You guys got that, then? So, which is not surprising. And just a quick reminder here, that I always think this is important to mention, that for us, at this college, over 70, about 70% of our students are 24 or under. We're a pretty young college in the state, so when I look at these numbers, that's the bulk of our population, those students who are 24 and under. So the next one is our five-year trend, and I'd like you to look at this one, because this one always concerns me, and this is the completion by ethnicity. And if you look at that top red line, those are our Asian students. And if you look at that bottom green line, those are our Latino students. And you can see the gap in achievement we have, and everybody else is falling in the middle somewhere. And that's a, that's a five-year trend. And they track these students, they come in in a cohort year, and then they track them for six years out. So this is student progress and attainment rate for six years by ethnicity. And again, just to point out the difference here, the gap between our Latino students and our Asian students. This is SPAR by remediation and ethnicity. So, and I'd like to take a quick look at this one. This is when students come into us by ethnicity, and they're college-ready, this is how well they're completing. And I know you're probably looking at that chart for the American Indians, Alaskan natives, and you're saying to me, wow, 100% of them completed. That's really good. Well, that's probably because in that cohort year, there was probably somewhere between one and nine students in the cohort, maybe one. And we got lucky, and they completed, so we're good. And then this is SPAR by the unprepared students. So let me just go back quick and take a look at this one, okay? This is SPAR by college-ready. Okay, now here it comes. Unprepared. And the scales on the side, the percentages are the same.
Could you show, go back to the prepared?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it possible to get this emailed to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm always tweaking up to the last minute.
I know.
Okay, we're going to go on to the CTE completion rate. And I did the CTE completion rate, this time by age. So as you can see, it's pretty steady across the age, but we're seeing some drop-off in our older, our older students in their ability to complete the CTE sequence. Our younger students, again, are doing very well, probably not as well as we'd like them to do, but they do all right. The next one is persistence. And when they got the scorecard in place, they changed for persistence from two primary terms, fall to spring, or spring to fall, to three primary terms. So now students to be in this cohort have to persist from fall to spring to fall, or spring to fall to spring. So they're looking for three primary terms of persistence. So I did this one by ethnicity, and this is always very interesting to me, because we have very good persistence. We really do. All ethnicities, very, very good persistence. And some of those cohorts, where you see the drops, it's, again, because there were just really tiny numbers in the group. They don't even, they're so tiny, they don't even tell me exactly. They go one to nine, we're in the cohort, in that ethnicity. So as you can see, persistence, very good for us. So as you can see, persistence, very good for us. This is the 30-unit completion rate, and I kind of explained this in the document that I put in your packet, why this 30-unit is important. You know, they consider completion of 30 units a momentum point. Students who complete 30 units are more likely to go on and complete degrees and certificates or transfer.
Within how many years?
Yeah, this is 30 units within six years.
Six.
Yeah. I know. You're all looking at me. We're a two-year college, yeah. 30 units in six years. But this is how they measure everything for us, is always within six years. So this is a percentage of students who completed 30 units within six years. And as you can see, I broke it out for you by those who are college-prepared and those who are unprepared.
You have to be at it.
They're probably still here. Just kidding. Oh, just kidding. Okay. This is the English Basic Skills Completion Rate. So this is a cohort, and they take all the students who in the cohort year are enrolled in a remedial-level English, English course, and they track them for six years and see if they get up to a college-level course. So this is our completion rate for English Basic Skills by ethnicity. And again, I'm just going to ask you to take just a good look at this and look at the colors and the bars and where these percentages are, because the next one I'm going to show you is math.
Questions?
Mm-hmm.
Right. What percentage of the students who first enter PCC and are supposed to take an English course, what percentage of them take the remedial as opposed to the, right away, the college-level English course? Do we have any figures on that? I mean, does 70% of the people that enter PCC and take an English course, take a remedial first and then eventually get to the college course?
I think he's asking how many people place into English 1 as opposed to...
Is that what you...
Well, that's the reciprocal.
Well, because in order to, to take a college level in the English, which is the English composition sequence, because that's our basic skill sequence, you have to take an assessment test, a placement test, that places you into an English level. So I think what you're asking me is how many of our students are placing into remedial English?
Yes. What percent? As opposed to placing in the college English.
I think he asked you how many of them actually take it, because some students do not take it for their place.
That's correct. They don't take it.
Do you have those figures?
No, not right offhand. So is it, do you want to know how many actually take it when they first enter their first semester or first...
No, he wants to know how many people go into remedial, basically, as opposed to people who go straight to college. And it doesn't matter if they took the test or not, because they're, as long as they went to English 1.
Gotcha. So we're at about 65% of our students need remedial education.
Okay, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Is that good?
When I came to PCC, I didn't have to take a test because I'd taken an English 4 or whatever it was in high school, but that was a long time ago.
No, we do require students to take the assessment test. Is that good? Very good? Okay. Okay. So this is the English Basic Skills Completion Rate, and now I'm going to show you the math basic skills completion rate. Yeah.
Oh, no.
And this is, as you can see, is our African-American students and our Latino students are very much struggling. So you want me to go back and show you the English one again? Because it's fun? No? Okay.
Can you answer the same question for this?
It's the same.
About two-thirds?
Yeah.
Okay. About two-thirds are going to the remedial before getting the college level.
Right. And again, it's, it's a little, I should probably give you some better numbers on that, but our English sequence is shorter. There's really, we only only have two levels below college or transfer level in English, whereas our math sequence is a bit longer. So obviously, students struggle a little longer because if they start lower, it takes longer to get through. So, math, good? You got it? Yeah, okay. So this is the ESL completion rate. This one I did by age. And as you can see, once again, our younger ESL students are doing, are doing well, and our older ESL students are struggling a bit.
And I want to interject here for a second and talk very briefly about some of the interventions that faculty are heavily engaged in right now. We've had math, English, and languages faculty for the last several years working on various types of acceleration models and various types of projects to try and be responsive to this. Our First Year Experience Pathways Program is an example of this starting rate. We are now launching, just this year, a second-year pathways program so that we, there's a handoff from first-year experience to a second year, again, working towards completion and providing a whole series of interventions from success coaches to mentors to tutors to all types of interventions to try and get these people to work and to be successful, I should say, and to get out through the system much faster than 30 units in six years. And then finally, we're looking at some grants right now, some of the things to actually develop what we call the Completion Center, where the whole focus on the center will be to complete students and to work through a variety of interventions. So there's, there are things afoot, if you will, to work on what the data is telling us needs to be worked on.
Thank you. And I just want to add to that is that right now, we're not in, at the point in the scorecard where those interventions are reflected, because we're not that far along yet.
But we're, but we're using the data to try to inform where we go to try to improve what we're doing, and have been for the last two or three years, working our way through these things.
That's correct. That was my last slide. Any questions?
Good timing, huh?
Yes, I was trying not to make it too long.
Any further discussions, or I'll accept a motion?
We have to prove it, or we have to remove it?
To accept it. Motion to accept.
We accept the scorecard report.
We have a motion from Dr. Mann, a second from Ms. Waugh, for their discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. Action number H today is additions, deletions, and modifications to the credit curriculum which you have before you. Any other comments?
No other comments. Dr. Scott is here to respond to any questions, should the board have any.
Is there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion from Dr. Mann, a second from Ms. Waugh, for their discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. Action number I is Presidential Search Update, and we have the timeline and position profile this evening. Ms. Waugh, we have a...
We have a request from a speaker, Dr. Susie Abadjan.
Yeah.
We have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Susie Abadjan, and I'm also, I'm a member of the community and also on the search committee, the presidential search committee. I am, I'm here to comment on the community meeting that was supposed to take place tonight to get input on the presidential search criteria. And so I know that the initial meeting was scheduled from 5:00 to 6:00, and then it was extended to five, from 5:00 to 7:00. Well, I arrived 20:00 past 6:00, and the meeting was adjourned. And I really, I couldn't make it earlier because I had my work, and so I really wish that I had been able to hear from the community. And I don't know if the meeting wasn't promoted, you know, or people were given enough time to come and be here, but I wish that I had the opportunity to hear more from the community. And I know that this is the last community meeting, so I don't know if there's a possibility of perhaps extending that. Thank you.
There'll be no more community meetings, but you can talk to Stan Attenberry.
I have.
And there was no one here after that time, so they didn't have a meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Pho, I would like to point out that there is no search committee. This is a screening committee.
Right, screening, I'm sorry.
I mean, I think, but that is a significant difference, and so I think we need to clarify that from the beginning.
Sure.
That this committee screens, it doesn't search.
Since Dr. Abadjan is actually my community representative on the screening committee, I think it was just a, probably a difference in vocabulary here, but I think that her point is well-taken. So hopefully, we will hear from Mr. Attenberry.
Again, this is to form the presidential search description, and there'll be more community opportunities for you to come in when we get the search going.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Abadjan.
Okay. Presidential Search Update. Shall we...
Not for me, so.
Huh? What did you say?
Not for me to deal with. I believe you've got people in the audience ready to speak.
Why don't you, our... Why don't we begin and have Stan and come up?
Nikki.
Ms. Nicholson.
We don't have any more speakers, do we?
No.
I don't know what we're waiting for. This Presidential Search Update deals with the timeline and position profile. Mr. Attenberry, do you have something to...
President fellow board members, faculty, staff, administrators, I want to thank you for allowing us the second opportunity. When we gave our presentation, or when I gave the presentation to the board, we had talked about a number of ways of addressing the position profile, and I had talked about community forums, surveys, and et cetera. And based on the time element, we felt that it would be beneficial to do forums. And so we made a decision to do a forum on the 14th to invite community members as well as college constituents. And Dr. Nikki Harrington, my partner in the project, participated in that aspect. We believe that the invitations did come out from the district to the campus constituents as well as community folk, because there were a number of community folk at the meeting on the 14th. I then received a phone call from a president fellow indicating that there were some concerns expressed by the board, that there was a need for even further communications with community folks. And in my conversation with Dr. Pho, I suggested that we hold a public forum on, tonight, from 5:00 to 6:00, and that we would ask the college, again, to solicit and to invite, and we were informed that the college did take affirmative action to invite folks to the meeting. And a subsequent call with Dr. Pho, we felt that 5:00 to 6:00 would be insufficient, and so we felt we would hold a meeting from 6:00 until, I mean, from 5:00 until 7:00. And then Nikki and I discussed that and felt that we needed at least 30 minutes, especially if we received a lot of input, to be able to review the input and be able to incorporate it into what was discussed on Friday. We had, I think, four or five folks who showed up at 5:00 o'clock, and Dr. showed up at 6:00, right? Little past 6:00. And by that time, the other, the other community members had left. And so we did engage with a brief conversation with her, and we shared, did you share the friend card with her? We did share the, all of the screens that were discussed. And we felt that the discussion that took place, and Dr. Harrington will go over the discussion, the discussion that took place for an hour was very fruitful, but we felt that there were really only two salient points that came out of that hour. All the other stuff that was discussed had already been discussed and incorporated into the document which she will review. It's entirely up to the board if you would like to have further discussion on, on your profile. So that's, that's a board decision. It's my understanding that the board has taken action and approved our contract, and so therefore, we're working and we're moving forward. And we feel that you have received significant amount of input from your faculty and the four or five community members who participated on Friday, and there, it was about a two-hour, three-hour, about a two, three-hour activity. So I think what's important is that you take a look at this. This is your opportunity now to make any comments that you feel that should be incorporated into the document, and that I would recommend that you move forward. We would ask that you allow a little switch and that we talk about the document first, then the timeline, because the timeline kind of comes at the end of the document, it would sequence you better.
Okay, and so this is the time for the trustees to give their comments. And again, the, the draft that was sent to you is also the work of the trustees. This was the interim board description. So do you want to talk a little bit about the document, or...
Well, the document that was presented to me by Dr. Nicholson was the, what I believe was the document that the board used to select Dr. Miller for its interim assignment. We took that document, reviewed it, and made some, made some changes, made, there was some clarification that I felt were necessary in the qualification area. In the qualification area, you didn't really have it separated between preferred, minimum and preferred, and I thought it was important that the, we to really see that the preferred and the minimum, and what are the difference between those. So that changes were made. We made some other technical changes in terms of language to the document, and began to assess dates that we should project the whole item out. That was completed and sent to, to Dr. Nicholson, and I believe that was presented to the board and the whole board.
We shared it with the board last time. We didn't vote on it.
Okay, that was shared with the board.
Last meeting.
At the last meeting. And then that document is what the forums were based on. And as I recommended to the board, that the board hold the responsibility of deciding the qualifications they want for the position, the minimum and the preferred, that that is yours, and I strongly still recommend that you maintain that, and that the other areas that we get input in terms of the challenges and opportunities and qualities and characteristics that we would like to see in the candidate. And that was the discussion that Dr. Harrington led Friday, and we jointly led that today.
And I think it's important for the board to know that you received about 78 comments.
Yes, and Dr. Harrington will go over that.
Okay. Why don't you do that right now?
May I ask a question? I'm pretty lost. I'm not sure what documents we're talking about. I received absolutely nothing. I don't know what we're talking about.
Okay.
Right here.
Several weeks ago, you should have received, at your last board meeting, a draft position announcement.
Yes.
Yeah, we have received it.
Yeah. It was basically the interim.
It was interim with a little modification. So you should have received that. Then we made some changes to that, which you have tonight. So you now have that tonight.
We have it tonight? I didn't...
Yes, it's right, it's right here.
And if you, if you look in this document here, oops, I don't have the cover, but yes, that document. And if you go to tab number two, Recruitment Brochure, you'll see two separate documents, and that's what Dr. Harrington will review with you now.
Thank you.
Dr. Harrington, who's done a very good job. I sat in on one of her sessions.
Thank you. Chairman fellow and the rest of the U.S. trustees of the board, I want to tell you that you'd had a very active group at the forum on Friday. The forum was attended by a mix of about 50% community members and 50% faculty administrators and staff, so it was a nice mix of people. We ended up using response cards where people wrote their ideas of what they wanted to see in the job description, and also Vicki took notes of the dialogue that took place at the time, too. So we had a really good discussion. Behind your second tab, you have, as was mentioned, two documents. The first one is the document that you received, and everything in there that's either a strike through or in red is information that was integrated into the document from the input from that session. We ended up with 78 discrete input items from the group, so I think it was a really productive session, and I felt very good about the, the discussion that took place and the input items that they had to offer. What you'll see in the, in the description, if you go to the job description, it starts off at the top with, with the, obviously, the title and the office, the position. I don't need to read it to you, but what I do want to focus on are the three areas that had substantive input by the, the members that were present. The first area is opportunities and challenges. You'll see in that section a couple of things that were substantive. The first item on the accreditation was changed to read that the new superintendent-president would follow up on accreditation because the self-study is done, and the visit will be in the spring before that person starts, which would be July, about July 1st of 2015. So that was one change that was substantive. A little further down, you'll see some more information on some specifics that people felt very strongly about, talking about current curriculum, current technology, discussion about online instruction, some of those things, and we wove those into the document here in the second area. The last one on that page, you'll see that it talks about working relationships. I was noticing in your discussion earlier today about the board's goals for the college, and many of the things that you have in the board's goals for the college are consistent with this description of the challenges and opportunities for the new superintendent president. So that's a nice fit together as well. This last one on this page, there was quite a bit of discussion about building collegiality and shared governance and people working together and that. So you'll see a number of places in this description where we embellish the language with more information about the buy-in of people who work here and building consensus and the new superintendent president leading that effort in the college. On the next page, the first one, there was some discussion about accessibility and the superintendent president being accessible to the community as well as to folks inside of the college itself. So besides, or in addition to staff, being accessible to community members and being out and about in the community. And so we added a little language on that. We also added in chambers of commerce and elected officials and boards, other boards in the community. So you'll see those as additions in the document. In the third bullet on this page, where it is talking about fiscal areas, we thought the best place to place the input from tonight's session would be right after that. And the two areas that people focused on tonight, as Stan had mentioned, the other areas were already included in the document. We had a really nice discussion tonight, even though it was a small group. I think we had seven, maybe seven people at that session. But it was a very good discussion. Most of the items were included. The two areas that were not included from the group Friday, one was on legislative advocacy, and one was being involved in economic development efforts of the region. So those two, we would recommend being added right here after that third bullet. And they would read as follows. The first one would be enhancing PCC's role in economic development efforts. And the next one would be advocating for policy and legislation on local, state, and national levels. So those would be two additions that would be included in here if the board so desires. Moving on then, the addition of virtual capabilities. There was discussion about the technology of today and trying to be in a virtual environment and leading some of that effort. The next one is on proactive recruitment for a diverse faculty and staff with the upcoming large number of projected retirements. There was discussion about the likelihood that there will be about 25 faculty retiring this year, coming up at the end of this school year, as well as some administrative and classified staff. And it was felt that there needs to be leadership from the top of the organization to recruit a diverse replacement group. So a lot of focus on that and to the level that it really should be in the superintendent president's job flyer. Moving along then to the next area was expanding outreach. We did a little bit of verbiage change here so that this also includes educational pathways and identifying those for youth, adult students, veterans, the unemployed, and students from all high schools in the district. Some discussion about how many students leave the college for a couple of years and then they come back. Or you may have displaced workers. You may have students who've gone out to make a living and then they come back to earn a degree. There was discussion about carrying the pathway process deeper into the K-12 system. So you start out in elementary and middle school, junior high, middle school age, and then into high school so that you get a college-going sense among the youth that they believe that they really could be college-bound students. So there's a lot of initiatives like that that could be forged by the college. So that was expanded quite a bit in that particular one. The, let's see, I think that was all in the Opportunities and Challenges section.
That's good.
Then moving on to the Preferred Qualifications, a couple of comments about that. These two items right here, we felt actually were more than preferred. There was so much discussion about collegiality that we felt that really needed to be more than preferred. It really needed to be essential in the person's activities. So we recommended moving that into the Professional Characteristics section as an area that really needed to be part of the flyer. And the second one on communication skills, respect and empathic listening. There was a lot of discussion about people speaking civilly and respectfully with each other and having stronger communication skills. And that appeared to be more than just a preferred quality, but rather should be in the actual personal qualities section. So we would recommend moving that one down to personal qualities. And then we added two into the preferred area. There was discussion, quite a bit of discussion in the group about whether the college wanted to recruit from inside or outside of this area. And the discussion was that we wanted people who would be applying, who do have a working knowledge of multi-ethnic communities. So whether they lived here or not, what we talked about with the group was having experience in multi-ethnic communities. That's really what people were suggesting we're looking for. And then the last one on cultural competence. This is a relatively new area in education that leaders have cultural competence. And it fits very well with the multi-ethnic and multicultural aspects of this district. So that was added. And maybe I'll stop there and see other questions or anything. And then I'll move to the characteristics.
Dr. Mann?
Yes. I've had a lot of experience working with searches. And I find that the tendency always is to focus on the deficiencies of the person who just left and to ignore the strengths. And one of the things that I don't see in here, and I think we're seriously competing in, is we want to have the person to have a very strong understanding of the, and I'm trying to think how to word it, but the curricular changes that need to be made in order to teach diverse and underprepared students. And that they have a strong, that they also can be a strong academic leader. I think those are very important characteristics. They're nowhere, they're nowhere in here. But I think particularly, we need someone who understands the culture, not the culture. We need someone who actually knows how to lead a transformation of the curriculum to serve the students we have today. I don't see that. I think we should add it.
In the review of your materials for the college and looking through the website and all the things that you have about Pasadena, you actually have a preface, a really nice preface in there that says that the president has three major functions. And the first being the academic leader of the institution, what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's not here.
And the second is managing the institution. And the third is reaching out to the community. Maybe taking some of that language and putting it into here might be appropriate then.
I think that's, I think that's really appropriate, that we not forget where, that we, the president, that this is a college and we are looking for someone who has the strength to do that, the background.
So we could do that as weave those three themes in that are
Right. Those three themes in.
From your college already.
Right.
Okay.
Any other comments?
And do you want me to then look at the professional characteristics and the personal qualities? In the professional characteristics, as you scan through the list without reading them all, you'll see that there are a number of comments about being an effective leader and manager. There was discussion about needing vision, being a leader, motivating people, moving them forward, looking for innovation, those kinds of things. There was, there was a sentiment about the academy, the academic part, which ties a little bit, Trustee Mann, to what you were just talking about.
Yes, absolutely.
And you'll see that in the second bullet, adding in maintaining a strong academic program. So there are a few comments like that in this section as well.
That's very good. Because this college does have very strong academic programs.
Yes, right.
Which bullet, this is kind of jumping back and forth here.
Yeah.
Which one are you speaking?
Yes. I'm right here on Professional Characteristics, the second one, where it talks about a strong academic program. There was information added in that one. Respecting the traditions, maintaining a strong academic program.
Okay.
Yes. That one right there?
She's at the second bullet under.
Under Professional Characteristics.
Okay.
Okay. Expenditure of grants was another area people talked about. This institution, if it's a, for example, being an HSI institution, are we sure that the candidate understands how to work with targeted grants and that money is spent appropriately according to the grant language? And people felt strongly that something should be in there about that. Couple of other things on budget, collegiality. And then a little further down the page, the one that starts demonstrated ability to be a firm and prompt decision-maker. Where is that? That one? There was a discussion about adding in that the decisions need also to be based on data and evidence. So that it's not just an intuitive kind of a decision, but that the person would listen carefully, take into account all the perspectives, and also use data and evidence in support of making a decision. Listening, responding, these are words that were very important words to people. Open to diverse opinions, etc. And the last one was an additional statement that was added. And that one is commitment to PCC's shared values. And these are the values right out of your college website and your college site. It covered quite a few things that people were talking about in the forum. And lastly, personal qualities, under personal qualities. There were several classified staff in attendance that said, we don't see ourselves in this document. You know, we want a leader who pays attention to us as well. And the first sentence, it said, the original one said faculty and administrative colleagues. And we changed this to faculty, classified staff, and administrative colleagues. Integrity and respect were added in as personal qualities, as was the description of the person having humility. So that kind of summarizes the input. Like I say, we had 78 discrete input items. And so the challenge was trying to integrate them into the language that's here, make sure that it was consistent with PCC's current catalog and website language, that you were, that it was very congruent, and that it still was concise enough to stay in a document of about four pages long to get all that kind of information in.
Ms. Wa.
Yes, thank you. And I'm really happy to see that we got so much input. You know, my issue was really more on the process. And as I heard Mr. Attaberry when you gave the presentation on the search firm, one of the things that really impressed me was when you talked about how important it was to build the profile and to get the input of community. So I was really concerned when I saw that we only had one meeting scheduled, and it was three hours, and it was in the middle of the day. And so I did send out notices. I had a few community people come. And then only two days, I think Thursday, we were able to then schedule today's meeting. So I don't think that was really enough. I'm concerned that it wasn't enough time for us to have community in. And I actually did hear from my community members who would have really liked to have participated, but didn't feel that they had enough notice. The other thing that was really impressive to me, Mr. Attaberry, when you made your presentation was, and I may have misremembered this, I don't know, correct me if I did. But I thought I had in my notes that you talked about the importance, how you thought that using technology to do outreach, such as electronic surveys, which actually had just been done in my area in the K-12s, was really important. You know, and considering that we have a pretty extensive community here in PACCD, I thought that would have been good to cast the net as wide as possible. We also have three ethnic advisory committees to the president. And I had hoped that there would be some outreach at least targeted to them because they work very closely with the president. So just sort of at a time when the board, and we've just finished our campus climate issues, and the board has been criticized for lack of transparency, lack of outreach, and hearing that there is possibly a feeling that there wasn't enough time to give input, I just worried about the process. And as I was looking through the contract and what was proposed, you know, I always like to think, see things in terms of deliverables. So I know the staff, the contract staff is rolling their eyes because I'm always asking for that. But, you know, so I didn't know if, is there a limit to the number of community outreaches we can have? I mean, is this not included in the contract? Or how would you address that? And then it goes on then, as I'm reading through, what we could get or what we can expect in terms of services. I see that, you know, there'll be, there'll be questions for the search committees. And I assume that what we'll do is, maybe I'm assuming incorrectly, that we will have some time to look at what those questions are. So I'm just not clear what the scope of services is.
Let's kind of address this. In terms of the sequential of time, was looking at wanting a start date of July 1. So everything would be hopefully from a start date of July 1. We did have, we were informed that all of the president's advisory bodies were invited. We did have someone from the African-American Community Advisory and the Asian Advisory Committee here today with us.
And Friday.
And Friday. So those constituent groups were here. Using a survey, if that's the direction of the board, we could do something. And, but then again, you got to recognize your timing. So I think that the efforts by the college community to invite folks was well. We asked the president's office, and I believe it was done through PIO, or can you help me, who did the invitations out for today?
I spoke with the trustee's administrative assistant.
And was informed that those invitations were sent out to the respective community groups. And it's to the wishes of the board. We believe that you have a very good document here to recruit some quality folks with the addition of Trustee Mann's comment or any other comments, because you folks haven't had your take at this yet. And I would strongly advise you to have your take at this this evening as well.
May I just do some follow-up on that? I'm sorry. You know, I just wanted to add that, yes, the API community reps were there on Friday and again today. But that's because I specifically had to do the outreach. And that's how I knew that other community members wanted to come but were not able to. There just wasn't sufficient time. So, you know, for me, yes, I know that some feel that July 1 is an absolute drop-dead date. But having, I wasn't on the board when the last presidential searches were made, but seeing that there might have been some, some things that could have been done differently, where we could have been, I don't know, if the tenure could have been longer. It does seem to me that we could be a little more thoughtful and that maybe that should be the priority is, you know, how do we really get that input? And how do we become more transparent and really build a solid profile that helps us get the person we want? So that's just my comment.
I feel you being transparent. You invited your community. I hope that some of the recommendations that Dr. Harrington has presented will be accepted by the board because that did come from your community folk. If you recall at the board, when I was interviewed, I said, do not let July 1 be a determining factor of who you hire. So I'm not stuck on a July 1.
I knew you weren't.
But you have to build, you have to build some assumptions. And the assumption is July 1. But we do not let that date be a determining factor. So it's, trustee, it's up to you and the board. We're here to present our findings and recommendation on this. And then I would like to also go over the other documents that you have and the calendar as well.
Ms. Brown and Dr. Mann?
So I was actually, let's see how we put this. So actually, I was not on board all the way because I was not really, I guess I did not fully understand how this profile was going to be developed. Now I see, which for some reason I did not see the previous document. I have millions of documents flying around. So, but seeing that we did have a previous document, I did read the announcement in the Star News on Sunday. I did see it in the Independent Paper on Saturday. I did see it in the Independent Paper on Saturday. I personally sent out a lot of, an email blast to at least 30 community members. And your process that you've developed here, that I see here, being all we're looking for is a profile, and reality is, I am not sure how much more of a different flavor we would get to add in this document. So at this point, I'm going to be okay with it. It may have not been how I would envision it, it would to be, but I think the end result, I'm okay with. So I'm fine.
Thank you. Dr. Mann?
I would like to just follow up on what Ms. Brown said. I'm, I'm fine with this. I think you've done a good job. I don't think July 1st is so important. What I think is really important is, there is a time when people start looking for positions. There isn't, there is a pattern in the academic world. People start looking for positions right around the first of the year. And one of the problems we have had in the past is we have gone out too late, and there are many candidates have already made commitments. So I think it's really important that we keep in tune with, with the normal academic rhythms, I might say. And even though we want you to find as people who don't know they want to be president of PCC, we also want to be available to people who know they do want to be president of somewhere, and when they start looking at the Chronicle, that it's there. And if we wait too long, if we go into February, if we go into March, we're going to lose lots and lots of people. So I'm perfectly happy with what we've done and to go forward tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. I just also want to say, having worked on so many searches in my 28 years at the university, I think you did a fine job. And I think, as Ms. Brown said, is that the more input you get, you're going to get, and tonight we discussed, is you got the same comments. And, and so I'm very fine with this. And to pick up on what Dr. Mann says, we have two sister community colleges who have openings for presidents, and those searches, I think the application deadline is finished, and they're going to start interviewing very soon. So it's time for us to move on. Any other comments? Okay, thank you for that. What about the timeline?
Okay, let's, you have that under tab three in the screening committee's workbook. Give you an opportunity to get to tab three. Okay. So if you, if you notice that we're doing the presentation this evening, working with Dr. Nicholson in HR, we'll develop a advertising campaign to get that going immediately. And we look at the closing date to be February the 12th at 4:00 p.m. So that's, that's our advertising period. The concern we have, as Dr. Mann was saying, you have a dead period in December. You know, you got that Christmas break. Everybody takes off, and then they come back in January. So we'll have the first committee meeting the week of January 6th, I mean, 2nd through 6th, February, February 2nd through 6th. Of course, we would, the board would need to complete its appointment to the committee. February the 13th, Nikki and I will do our first review of the applications to see what's in. And during, periodically during this process, we will be communicating with Dr. Nicholson on the number of applicants received. I have to be honest with you, it is usually the last week that they come in.
Right.
You know, people tend to really wait to that last week to get their stuff in because of their need for confidentiality. And all of the documents are being submitted to Ralph Anderson's and Associates electronically, which also assures confidentiality in the process. And then at the first committee meeting, we take a look at the committee binder. There's material in the committee binder that would assist the committee in its function of paper screening. I need from the board, your minimum number of applicants you're going to direct the committee to send to you. I would need to know who your committee chair is, and then the full committee membership. And it would be the faculty representation, classified representation. Is there a student on that committee?
Yes.
Two students.
The student trustee, two students on the screening committee. And so we need that information. All of that document will then be delivered to Dr. Nicholson on the 17th electronically so that it can be dispersed to the, to the screening committee. And we'll go over the screening process in the first meeting. Then the screening committee will have four days to paper screen for you, to determine, based on the number that you recommend. I usually will tell the board, let's, let's, I'm just going to play with some numbers. Let's say you tell you want at least five candidates. Okay, that's, that's your minimum. But you'll take eight or nine. But you won't take three or two. So if they send you two, I would tell the committee, if that's all you could come up with, I'm going to the board and ask the board to extend the process. So you have to be firm on your numbers so that the committee will know what their job is. You also have in your policy that you have a right to interview anyone that apply. But I would strongly encourage you to stick with, at the first cut, what your committee paper screen. Because if you don't, my feelings would be, your committee would feel the time that they vested was not worth it. But at least on the first cut, you want to take what your committee brings to you. And so then we have, February 25th, the committee meets to determine who they're going to paper screen. You will give us that number. We contact those folks. And then you have your semifinal interviews the week of 17th through 20th in March, and I strongly, strongly encourage you to have that off-campus. Again, to maintain confidentiality. We try to maintain confidentiality for these folks up until the final round. Once they're finalists, then it's over. But because you are doing this in a little different fashion, you're interviewing semifinalists, we will begin our reference checks on the semifinalists. Okay? Typically, we would wait until the finalists to start reference checks. But with you folks, we'll start our reference checks on the semifinalists. So once the semifinalists are identified, they have to sign a release statement that gives us permission to start checking their reference, their credit, their criminal background, their driver's license, everything else about them. Because we need to have that information for you come that meeting, because you're going to be at the point of coming up with your finalists. I also indicated, I mean, I didn't indicate, but I talked to Dr. Fallow about what happens on that two-day visit. And how many finalists are we talking about? And what do you require the finalists to do on that two-day? We have some ideas and suggestions that we'd like to share with you. We're not ready to put that in paper right now. But my recommendation, and Dr. Fallow confirmed that you have one, let's say you have two finalists, one per day. Starts at 8:00 in the morning, ends at 5:00, and dinner with the board. That is a typical day for a college president. And at that time, also, we get the candidate to have a lot of vested time with constituents, on and off-campus constituents. All those folks are given some form of evaluative measure, and hopefully we will work with staff here so that is done in some kind of a survey fashion, like Survey Monkey, and I believe you probably have a good system here, so that the staff can input that information, and then it's readily available for you before you make your, your decision. And then we also recommend, and again, it's determined to the board, if you do a site visit of the candidate that you're going to, think you're going to select, visit their campus. And I like to say the site visit is of affirmation of what you think. You know, now you go and talk to other folks, and we see how he or she operates, and that's a decision that you would have to make. And then it's also a decision on who you take to that site visit. Is it just board members? You know, it can be more than three, so that limits that. Do you bring other staff members as well? We will have recommendations for you on that. And then hopefully, May, June, you're able to negotiate a contract with your successful selection and have the person start July 1. Now, all of this can change for many reasons. You know, and, but we try to stick to this, especially with having a large number of community members, we got to really work and coordinate calendars.
Ms. Wa.
So at what point will you be, or will you be sharing any of your screening questions with the board at all? Or will this only be shared with the screening committee? And at what point will you be bringing back updates on where you are in this process? How many candidates do we get? How many are you down to?
You have questions there in your packet now. You have, I don't know, about 100 and maybe 100 questions, 90 questions for you to take a look at that you may want to use if you so choose. So you have a packet of questions for your final interview presented to you.
So is that, so is that what we're approving tonight? Because this is the first time we're seeing this.
No.
No, just approving the description.
No, no, no. The only thing you're approving tonight is the calendar and the, and the profile. Those are the only two items. But you have a bank of questions that you could set up a subcommittee, however you want to do it, to look at these banks of questions, to come back and recommend to the board the questions you would like to use for your interview. Also, you would also want to talk about any other evaluative measure. Do you want the person to do a writing assignment? Do you want him to do a board presentation assignment? You know, you want to look at those kinds of evaluative measures as well.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Dr. Savage?
Right. A couple of these have to do with the screening committee. I've asked somebody to serve, and he's agreed to serve. I gave him an idea what the commitment would be, but when can I, or somebody, give him some specific information, and I'm not sure I would get it correct if I recited off this schedule here, exactly how many days or the timeframe that they would be doing work? I know the first meeting, the four-day meeting would be sometime starting in mid-February. Is that four consecutive days, all day? I don't know the answer to, so there are a bunch of questions I wouldn't be able to answer. So I either need to be told very in detail, or I have to be able to, you know, tell this person who I think would be a really great member of that screening committee to talk to and make sure that the commitment is understood.
I think, Dr. Nicholson, the deadline is?
You can have them talk, and I can give them a rough idea of the dates. Some of the dates are disappeared, but I can give them a rough idea of the times and dates of this, of that commitment.
Okay, I don't want to get it wrong.
Okay.
Let me add, right now, we're hoping that the screening committee only has two meetings.
Is that two days?
Well, I'm hoping the meeting would be no more than a couple hours. So they only have two meetings. Their real bulk of work is going to be paper screening.
Okay, that's, members individually going over the materials.
Yes. Because, because they'll have their first, they'll get all the applications, they'll do their paper screening, then they come back, a second meeting with all of their data, which they'll have to turn in before, to determine who are the candidates they're going to recommend as semifinalists. That's where the bulk of the work for those folks comes.
And I think, Dr. Nicholson, you set a deadline for trustees to get their names in?
For the trustees, I think I said 28.
November 28th.
Right. Get their names. And I do have several names already, so. And then for the campus community, I've heard from several people that said they have to go through meetings to nominate people and vote and so forth. And so they're going to give me those names as soon as possible.
Thank you.
And then trustee Wa, you had a question I did not address, and it was?
Chair had a bunch of them.
No, there was one about this timetable, I think.
Oh, I asked whether, when the board would be getting updates, or would the board be getting updates?
Okay, the updates. I would probably want to give you an update before the Christmas holiday, because that would give us about two or three weeks of advertisement, and I'll probably come back and say to you, "We don't have any."
You know, I have a follow-up then on, on the profile, since we are just seeing the input from the community. Do you, and I still am concerned about getting this out to other community and getting input. I mean, is it possible to just post it for, I don't know, a week and let people give input, or give dates, or what?
Again?
Well, I'm just asking. I mean, how difficult is that? And is it?
The one thing that I would say, because we look at these all the time, and we do searches not only in California but across the country, this is a very comprehensive profile. And what, what happens, what usually happens is the first session, you get a lot of input, and then with each session, it's duplicative of what the first session was. So most everything that we'll get now, if you did more, would be likely the same as what's on here. I can't think of anything myself to add anymore from what's in here.
It is very comprehensive.
Because it does have a lot in it already. But the other, the other thing that might be helpful is, because your, your screening committee has seven community members on it, that's another avenue for people to, to share with those. As soon, the sooner you get those people identified of who they are, then you can route people's comments and thoughts to them as well.
So you're saying that there would be time, then, to maybe even strengthen the profile a little bit more with some community input? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is, I would recommend that you get closure on it so that we can start getting it out to people. That would be my advice.
Okay, well, isn't that what I just asked? I mean, I think that's what I asked, is how, would there be a period of time for people to be able to look at that and give some comments?
I think the, the screening committee can look at the document once they start screening, and they can screen for those particular things that you identify as board members, because I think you're setting up the screening criteria of what you want to see in a candidate. So that could be an important part of the process.
Well, I hate that.
But I think what you're, what you're asking is to hold, to go back and revise the document, I think is what you're asking.
No, no.
Once we get community, if we get some more community input. Is that what you're asking?
Right, if there's some additions to make sure.
This is the board. The board needs to make a decision. Either you approve the document tonight, or you extend it and allow additional input for a period of time, a day or two or whatever, to your next board meeting, which is when?
I think it's December 10th.
December 10th, it's almost a month.
People, we're not going to get any more, anything to add to this, I can guarantee you. I've been through this.
Or you approve the document. As Dr., well, I keep getting your two guys.
It's Nikki and Nicky, it's all Nikki and Vicky.
You have a, trustee, I assure you, you have a very comprehensive, adding what trustee Mann said and any other comment, because you folks haven't taken a stab at it yet. And so we want to make sure that we incorporate what you feel, you guys feel as a board should be in this document, and then the board takes action.
Well, hopefully, that's what you've got tonight. Okay, Dr. Savage, then we're going to have to.
Yeah, I had, my other two questions.
Do this for a year. Go ahead.
What important decision we'll be making for the next year.
The first interview of any candidate will be, excuse me, after the screening committee? Excuse me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm out of water. After the screening committee has come up with a selection of front-runners, thank you.
Semifinalists.
That's semifinalists. That's when the first interview will occur.
That you folks will conduct.
Oh, we?
Yes.
I misunderstood. I thought it looked as if.
Yes.
The search consultants contact.
And invite them to a semifinal interview with the board.
Oh, okay, that interview with the board. Okay, I misunderstood who was interviewing. Thank you.
Yes.
And then, apart from the input from the community members that are on the screening committee as members of the community, the next time that there will be formal input from people outside of the people running this and the board will be when a candidate comes to the campus? Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I will say, once the board approves this document, this is the evaluative measure that you're going to use to recruit and to select your candidate. So, in other words, don't take this tonight and approve it, and then next month come up with five new things. Because that's not what we're out recruiting, those five new things. So once you make a decision that you approve this document, this is the document that we will use to develop the recruitment brochure.
And with that.
It'll be a very fancy brochure, it'll have pictures and.
Thank you very much.
And then I have one other further comment. We do have an item on here that it says, "Information regarding travel reimbursement for your candidate." My recommendation is that you have two sets of interviews. One for your semifinalists, that you determine a dollar amount that you're going to reimburse up to. up to. Let's say it's $1,000. Let's say it's $500 for the semifinalists. Then you have your final candidates. Let's say it's two people. There, you would want to, and I would recommend, that you do full freight, because that individual, he or she, if they're going to be here for two days, they will probably have a two-day travel, because I would see their day starting at 8:00 in the morning, and they would probably want to get here the night before, et cetera. So my recommendation is that you provide some form of reimbursement for the first-level interview and some form of reimbursement for the second. You will lose candidates, those from far away, if you're not providing some kind of reimbursement.
Sure, thank you.
No, I shouldn't say you will. I'm sorry about that.
Do you have one final comment?
And I understand the need to expedite the process, but I also want to echo what trustee Waugh said in that, well, also to take this step further, I don't think the search committee day is going to change, so I don't see the problem with allotting some extra time to evaluate this, especially considering, I just saw this today, like, a couple hours ago. So I don't know how we're supposed to vote on this and have a finalized opinion on it if we just saw it right now.
So I would, no, I just saw this today myself. So I would like to ask maybe either Ms. Cooper or Dr. Miller. So I agree, I think waiting until December 10th seems a little bit long. Is it possible that you can give, like, I don't know, an extra week, or three days, or four days for this, us to get this out in the community and then let the Board vote?
I want to make it, can we put this in the form of a motion, either to delay this or to pass it tonight?
I'd like to get the question answered first, before we make that motion.
Are you asking if we could delay the board meeting from December?
Yeah, can we have, like, an emergency vote then? Or, I don't know if it constitutes an emergency vote.
I think the Board can call a special board meeting if it likes, anytime.
Special board meeting to do that.
Right.
So we could call a special board meeting, and we could do it by phone, or we could do it?
You could do it. There are certain requirements to calling and vote by phone. It has to be polled, and each time someone speaks, it has to be announced and so on.
Right, so I'm just saying that, yeah, maybe, I agree that December 10th, it holds it a little bit long, but I still am concerned that we don't have, I'm just seeing this altered document for the first time today, and I don't think that we've had enough time to get this out to the community.
Trustee Fellow, I'd like to make a comment. I've had my hand up for a while. We have the Community College League is meeting this week in Rancho, wherever it is, Temple Palm Springs. I think it's extremely important that we have this document there. Everybody, and, you know, all the college presidents, all the vice chancellors, everyone is going to be there. I assume that we're going to have our consultants there. And I think if we delay, we are missing a big opportunity. There will be hundreds of people there, and they can take it home, they can take it to their friends. Other people will be there with their announcement, and they will be recruiting, I can tell you that.
So I would like to move that we approve the profile and the timeline.
Second. Any other discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
No.
We have one, two, three, four votes in the affirmative, one vote in the negative, and the student trustee votes in the negative, the motion passes. Now we move on to.
Dr. Fellow, you need to roll call that vote.
Okay, let's roll call. Mary?
Dr. Fellow?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Waugh?
No.
Dr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Dr. Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Mr. Lewis?
No.
Motion passes. We'll move on to items J.
Dr. Fellow, real quick, Dr. Bell will be taking our early alert to the league conference Wednesday, on Thursday. So we will have notice there, at that.
And that will go out on the Internet, too, you said?
Yes, yes, we're going to be out there. And we need to know from you before we really get going on the recruitment, the reimbursement question. That doesn't need to be decided tonight, but we need to know.
Dr. Fellow, I think it's really important that we reimburse candidates, but I do think it's a good idea to have a limit, because the first search I was on, we had a candidate who came from Florida on the train and went back on the train, and that cost a lot of money. So I think we could set up a thing, but I think we do need to say travel will be reimbursed. I mean, we don't want to nickel and dime and lose a good candidate simply because we don't want to pay for the travel.
Did he get the job?
No, he didn't get the job.
Okay, the Board officers, what if we had to get the Board officers together and get a payment?
Okay, but you can just say in the announcement, travel reimbursement. You don't have to have the announcement for the announcement.
No, we would prefer not to have it, and we would tell candidates, once we get a figure from you guys, that the district reimburs up to this amount.
Right. I do have a question on that. At the ACCT, one of the issues that came up in the contracts was whether or not you reimburse candidates after you offer them a job and then they decline.
J. Yes, that is true. Some schools are doing that. Some of the colleges are doing that, is if you offer them the job, then you don't reimburse them if they turn down the job. So that'd be something for the Board to decide what you want to do.
But we don't have to decide that tonight.
No, yeah.
No, it's an excellent question.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Mann, we're going to move on to J and K this evening.
Okay, that's the Board policies, correct?
Board bylaw and Board policy numbering alignment, and then the Board policies, two of them.
Yes. One of the things that we, that Ms. Colerose had requested, and I'm requesting, is that it's taking a while to go through these policies, and we would like to take all the old numbers and transpose them to the new numbers, but it would say the date that the policies were revised. We wouldn't change the revisions, but we'd have a consistent numbering system that when you went on the website, you could find it. The way it is now, if you go on the website and click on, say, the policy on, well, what do we have here tonight? On Board representation or advisory representation to the Board, you go, you click on that number and it takes you to another place, and then it's kind of confusing. So what this would simply do would be to authorize her to move so that we have all the policies with the same number, but it doesn't, it will still show when the policy was revised. And I would move that we do that.
I'll second that. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with the student trustee voting in the affirmative. Dr. Mann, I, K.
Okay, Board bylaw 2170, there's a correction here, there's a reference to education code. There, this code is no longer in effect. This policy, there is no legal requirement for this policy. It just says a designated space shall be provided, it means the Board trustees representing the shared governance groups, and then it lists the shared governance groups. Yes, Ms. Waugh?
So with all the, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, so with all the discussion about this shared governance versus participative governance, to stop this confusion, shouldn't we be consistent in the naming of what these groups are?
We have had that discussion before, when we looked at shared governance, and we had been told by some of the constituent groups that shared governance was okay, but if we wanted to change it to participatory governance, I think we could decide that and then ask Ms. Colerose just to go through and change them all, so that they're all consistent, which is what I would suggest that we do. Dr. Miller, do you?
The last time we had this discussion, which was several years ago, it did engender a great deal of concern about changing the name, changing the term "shared" to participatory. So I would be reticent to just make that recommendation unless we had a conversation about it at College Council and had a conversation about the meaning of the word participatory versus shared, even though the legislation is quite clear, there's talk about participatory, and there's even another word they use. But I wouldn't want this to turn into a thing, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I would like to have the academic side input.
Yes, maybe we can approve it now with the understanding that this will go to the College Council. There will be a discussion, and if there's a change, we'll come back, and then we can change it throughout the document, just by saying, anywhere it says this, we'll change it to that.
I think that would be prudent.
Do you put that in the form of a motion, Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would move that we ask the President to take the issue of changing shared governance to participatory governance, or whatever other group seems most effective to the College Council, and then come back to the Board with a recommendation.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy you, Dr. Miller?
I'll second it.
Ms. Brown, second that. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with student trustee voting in the affirmative. Before we go on to information items, we do have to.
We have one more policy.
Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Okay, the next one is Board policy 2780. Again, this is an existing policy. It is not legally required. It's a policy we've always had, which simply says the Board may contract for the services of an attorney as an employee or in private practice. And I would recommend we approve this unless there's some questions.
I will second that motion.
I have a question.
All right.
Okay, so I think this is fine, except I was a little confused by some of the wording, because in some parts, we refer to administrative advisors, in some part, we say it's the attorney. So is it compensation of the attorney and all administrative advisors, everybody who's covered under this? Or, I guess I was really confused by this wording.
Which wording are you confused by?
Well, all of the wording. In some places, okay, so we contract the services of attorney as an employee, or we utilize an administrative advisor, but the compensation is for the attorney. Is it also for the administrative advisor? So, and then in the next sentence, we just refer to the attorney. So I was uncertain what this was actually, what the wording was supposed to be.
Okay, I think the last sentence is simply defining what we mean by attorney in private practice, to say that would include a solo practitioner, a partnership, or professional corporation. I think the first is the distinction between, well, attorney in private practice, we've taken it out, as employee or in private practice, as an independent contractor. And there, I think that's, we're just clarifying that.
So as an advisory representative, are you only referring to attorneys in this? Is that what this is?
No, I think what it is, it gives us three options. We can contract for the services of an attorney, we can contract for an employee, we can contract for an independent contractor, or we can utilize an administrative advisor. Any of those things is appropriate.
Right, but then in the next sentence, you just go on to say, you only reference the attorney. So I just think the wording is not clear on this.
Do you have some suggestion for change wording?
Yeah, make it consistent. So either add in compensation of the attorney or advisor representatives. So in each case, if it can be all three of those groups, then we should reference all three of those groups instead of just referencing one.
Okay, so what you would say, compensation of such attorney or administrative advisor, I think, for whatever purposes, because the other is just whether the attorney is an employee of the district or attorney in private practice.
Right, and if that sentence only is in reference to the attorney, then that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so I would accept that the rest of the Board would, for clarification. So it would say compensation of such attorney or administrative advisor pursuant to contract should be a proper use of district funds, and then for the purpose, it defines what attorney is.
I will second that.
Okay.
Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with the student trustee voting in the affirmative.
I'm sorry, Dr. Mann, your earlier motion on bylaw 2170 was with regard to the term shared versus participatory governance, but I don't believe you made a motion to approve the bylaw.
No, I was just going to point that out. We need to do that one, too. So I would move we approve bylaw 2170.
I'll second that. Further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with the student trustee in the affirmative. Before we leave this and go to information items, we do have to approve the revised 87B consent item, and then Ms. Waugh pulled the 83B, B150186. Do you want to talk about that, or?
Well, that was the approval of the $35,000 for the Ralph Anderson contract, and whether or not I understood what we were actually paying for. And I'm, so I guess your motion would be to approve the contract if everyone understands what we're paying for.
And we'll also add the 87B with that, so we can move both of these, and I'll second that.
Revised, 87B revised.
And we'll second that. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Yeah, we did.
Did it?
Yeah. Okay.
Do you roll call on that?
Who made the motion to begin with?
Just did you report who, who voted no?
Trustee Waugh did.
Unanimous vote? Student trustee voting in the affirmative. Okay.
Pleasant unanimous, I'm sorry, trustee Waugh voted no.
No, with one no vote, okay. Information items, can we move on?
I'd just like to know.
Are we ready to move on?
Who made the motion to begin with?
I thought Dr. Mann did.
I did.
And I seconded it.
I made the motion, he seconded it.
Okay, let's move on to the information items. Number L, accreditation update?
Yes, Dean Jordan is actually at the, up in San Francisco. He is part of the Community College of San Francisco Restoration Team, and they started their work on Monday, so, or today, today's Monday, so he started their work, actually yesterday, Sunday, anyway, it doesn't matter. But, so I've asked Stephanie Fleming, who is our faculty self-study coordinator, to present all of the action improvement plan items that are now within standards one through four, as a sort of a summary to where we are with the self-evaluation report. Stephanie, thank you.
Hi, good evening, hello. So tonight, what I wanted to do was to give you an update on where we are in terms of the self-evaluation. So first of all, I just need to let you know that the Planning and Priorities Committee, which serves as our accreditation steering committee, has approved all of the final versions, the content of the entire self-evaluation. And so you all should have received one of these, lovely. Yes, yes, excellent. Just a couple of notes about this. So this is the finalized content. Obviously, it won't look like this. We have PR right now working on, you know, creating the templates, which they already have, and it's going to look something similar to the update to the educational master plan. It'll have that same type of feel to it. And so PR is working on that right now. We're still doing our final copy edit, so if you found any typos or anything like that, we're still going through the final copy edit. And I'm still numbering, doing the numbering system with all of the evidence. So if you see some question marks with some of the hyperlinks, that's what that is. So we're still doing that, but we just wanted to be able to get the content to everybody as soon as we could, because the content has been finalized and approved. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that. Let's see, moving on, the, so yeah, so you have that. So the signing of the document, it will happen at the College Coordinating Council on December 4th. So it will be that, you know, sheet that goes in the very front that has all of the shared governance leaders' signatures on that. So that'll be happening on the 4th. And then the signed document will be presented to you for final approval on December 10th. Okay, so that's the final timeline. Does anybody have any questions about that before we move on? So what I'm going to be covering tonight are the updates to the actionable improvement plans, or the AIPs. The AIPs, just as a reminder, are those self-identified recommendations that we have listed. So when you're going through and reading each one of the sections, it'll have the narrative and, you know, the self-evaluation, and then it'll have an actionable improvement item if it's relevant, okay? Matt and I have been coming here and doing those updates for you and explaining what the AIPs are for each one of those standards. Now that we've gone through and received all of the feedback from the public, from all of our constituency groups, those have changed a little bit, and so they've been updated. And so I just wanted to be able to share with you what those new AIPs are, so that all of you know what it is that we're recommending for ourselves in this document. One thing, before we start going through these, I need to let you know that there's a significant number of AIPs. We have over 40 self-identified areas of improvement. For those of you who've served on self-evaluation site teams, that's a large number. It is a large number. But, what it is, is it's a testament to the honesty of this particular document, and I think what it will do is it's going to show ACCJC, and specifically our site team, that we worked very hard to self-identify those areas of improvement, and that we did so very thoroughly. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about what our plans are in terms of the AIPs a little bit later after the presentation. So I know you have this in your packet. I'm not going to go through every single one of these, because you've seen most of these anyway, but what I did want to do was to highlight the new ones, or the ones that have changed, based on the feedback that we received on that first draft that we sent out. So 1A, the mission, this stays the same. I'm going to move through these. If any of you have any questions about the ones that we've already covered, please just let me know, and I'll stop, and we'll go back and discuss it. In 1B, which is improving institutional effectiveness, these have all stayed the same as well. So going through this, we had eight total in this particular section, and these are all the same as the ones that Matt and I covered with you when we covered standard one. Moving into standard 2A, you'll notice that some of these are in bold, and those are the ones that are new. I also want to point out, as you're looking at these, you're going to see some repetition. So some of these standards apply, or some of these AIPs apply to multiple standards, and so you'll see them a couple of times, and that's just because we wanted ACCJC to know that we're making a recommendation that might hit on something that's similar in multiple standards. For example, of the planning, the area, you know, integrated planning, that's not only discussed in standard 1B, but it's also something that we discuss later on in the actual document. So just to give you a little bit of a highlight about some of these ones that were new, so first of all, the Office of Academic Affairs, and again, these are to improve institutional effectiveness, okay? So we've said we meet the standards, and these are to improve institutional effectiveness. So the Office of Academic Affairs will ensure that program level and GEO level data is aggregated from course level assessment data, so that program SLOs are assessed, and the results are used for improvement.
GEO, general education outcomes.
Yes, so you'll see those two sometimes called ILOs, or institutional level outcomes. So the GEOs are those, our institutional outcomes is specifically applied to our degree areas. So we say that when a student transfers from PCC with a degree, they've met these particular outcomes. That's what GEOs tend to respond to in terms of assessment. The next one is that the Office of Academic Affairs Institutional Effectiveness Committee, deans and program faculty members will work together to complete all outstanding program reviews. The next is the Office of Academic Affairs Learning Assessment Committee, deans and faculty members will work together to complete all course SLO to program SLO alignment matrices. Now, alignment matrices is where we show that those course level outcomes that we have align to higher level. And so we do two different types of matrices. We'll have course to program level outcomes, or we'll have course or program to institutional level outcomes. And so when we align those on a matrix, then when we assess our course level outcomes, we can take that data and show how we're also assessing the higher level GEO or program level outcomes at the same time.
It was the previous time where they were voting on 87B and the Ralph Anderson contract.
And those are all the new ones for that area, okay? In 2B, which is Student Support Service, this AIP stays the same. Moving on to Library and Learning Support Services, the one new thing we have here is that the Library and Learning Resources will actively engage in the planning and development of the Centennial Facilities Master Plan. As we were going through the self-evaluation in this portion, there were some things that the library and some of our learning resource centers were asking for in terms of physical resources, and so this is the way that we're going to address that as an institution. Moving on to 3A, which is Human Resources, the new one here is that the college will develop concrete hiring timelines and procedures that allow the hiring process to be completed prior to the conclusion of the spring semester. And continuing in this area, we have several other additions. So to improve institutional effectiveness, the administration will work collegially with shared governance bodies to assess the effectiveness of the recent organizational realignment. That academic affairs and the academic senate will collaboratively develop policies and procedures for the assignment of reassigned time. That the college will evaluate the effectiveness of the required EEO training. That the college will develop policies and or procedures for the regular review and maintenance of all staff and student handbooks. And that the college will develop a comprehensive professional development plan. I just went through a lot, so, okay. You guys are like, it's 9:40. No. So moving on to 3B, this is Physical Resources, these stay the same as the last time that Matt and I came and talked to you about this particular standard. 3C for Technological Resources, these stay the same as well. And same for the Financial Resources Section 3D. Moving on to 4A, which is Decision Making Roles and Processes, we do have some additions here. And a couple of these are repeats that you'll see in other sections of the self-evaluation. The first is that the Associate Vice President of Strategic Planning and Innovation will work with campus constituencies to develop a regular and formalized evaluation of planning on campus, and make adjustments as deemed necessary through the shared governance processes. And again, that's a theme that we've been talking about throughout the entire self-evaluation. Another addition is that the President Superintendent, in consultation with the College Coordinating Council, will articulate participatory governance processes to include timelines and objectives for issues of institution-wide interest in writing, and disseminate them widely in advance.
I don't under, that sentence makes no sense to me. What does that actually mean?
So when this first, when we were first doing the self-evaluation portion, there's an item in 4A that's talking about communication.
Uh huh.
And this is probably worded kind of clunky, but that's what it's referring to, is in terms of communication, and making sure that any institution-wide processes that are developed are disseminated to everyone, so that everyone has a shared understanding. Dr. Corner, did you want to add anything to that?
Instead of saying to include us in writing, because it looks like institution-wide interest in writing, which I think would be great if we're all interested in writing, but could you just say written?
Sure.
Institutional write, because otherwise it's confusing.
I will clarify that, yes.
Yes.
And finally in this, well, actually, it's not finally in this area, but more in this area, is that the college will provide participatory governance training, and this is something that was echoed in Dr. Corner's presentation earlier about the board goals, that will emphasize the value of constituent input and clarify the responsibilities and roles of each constituency group. That the College Coordinating Council will perform a formal evaluation to assess the effectiveness of its standing committees, and that the college will document the dialogue of all College Coordinating Council standing committees with agendas and minutes that are accessible online. Continuing in 4A, the rest of these are ones that we've already discussed with you. This first one, though, you'll notice that it's in italics, and that's just to show you that the wording was updated. So this is the college will provide participatory governance training that will emphasize the value of constituent input, and clarify the responsibilities and roles of each constituent group. And moving on with 4A, the next kind of new one is that the college will provide training for all constituency groups on the California Brown Act. And finally, moving on to the last standard, which is 4B, the new one's here, and again, you're going to see some overlap with some of the other areas, that the superintendent president of the college, and that should be of the college, will regularly evaluate the implementation of its participatory governance and planning model, and make recommendations for improvement. And the reason you see this specifically here, and that you see the superintendent president identified here, is in a leadership capacity, which relates to the language of one of the standards. It connects to some of the other AIPs that we've had, but it specifically talks about the leadership role of the superintendent president. The Associate Vice President of Strategic Planning and Innovation will work with campus constituencies to develop a regular and formalized evaluation, and again, you've seen this one, this is the one about the planning. Moving on with 4B, the AVP, again, will communicate the existing integrated planning and processes to PCC constituencies, and the AVP of Strategic Planning Innovation will facilitate a process with shared governance leaders to further strengthen the links between evaluation, planning, and resource allocation. One of the things that I want to talk about is that we've already actually started a lot of the work on some of these AIPs, and I think we're going to be able to show the visiting team how far we've come with some of these self-identified areas of improvement. I know from reading this, it seems like a lot of AIPs, and I have to be honest, it is, from reading a lot of the other ones, but again, I think it's very important, considering what we want to tell the site team and ACCJC about the last few years, that we had all of these self-identified areas of improvement, and that we've, we're the ones that identified them. And what's most important moving forward is that we show that we already have a plan. So we actually started talking today and planning and priorities, it was today, yes, today, and planning and priorities, about how it is that we're going to be able to track our implementation of these AIPs. As we were going through some of these, some of these we've already started to work on, and we'll be able to put that in that column, and be able to explain to the team, when they get here, how far we've moved forward.
Earlier this morning, when Professor Fleming and Dr. Corner and I met, we basically talked about the presentation tonight, and all the points that Professor Fleming has made so expertly, I might add, thank you, was as a result of the conversation that we had this morning, as well as planning and priorities. And I think what's particularly exciting, or what makes me happy, if you will, is that the process was one that took into effect comment from over 200 people on campus, comments from over 200 people on campus. There was a lot of committee work, there was a lot of individual meetings with people, there was hours and hours and hours of work, and it resulted in the additions that you see here, which is very indicative of how seriously the campus took this, from a shared governance point of view, and from a, just a colleague point of view, collaborative point of view. The other thing is, is that even though there's 40 odd here, other colleges have done more. I know Ventura, I've been told, had over 50 AIPs. And the way this works is, is that we will present our plan to the team when they come in March, we will have made progress on the plan, and then at the midterm report, some three, three and a half years from now, we will have to put brief paragraph responses to what we, the progress we've made, and they're going to want to see evidence of that. So we're being very reflective, very self-reflective, we're being very open, we're being very honest, we're being very clear about how seriously we take this process, and this is another reason why accreditation is really a six- and seven-year process, it's not an every-six-year process, and we will work on this every year, as we get ready for the midterm, and then beyond that.
Yeah, and just to note on that, too, when we present this to you on the 10th, for your final approval, it doesn't mean that the process is over by any means. No one who is on PCC's accreditation team, that, you know, that works on this consistently, thinks of this as a process that's ending. And so I see it, you know, as part of my responsibility to continue to work with our ALO, our AVP of Strategic Planning and Innovation, Dr. Miller, and other leaders on campus, and our shared governance leaders, to be able to work on this plan, and to show that not only were we self-reflective, but that we also are forward-thinking and have plans on how to implement all of these changes that we want to see, so that we can better serve students.
Yeah, we will be better positioned than we've been in years, to be honest with you with this.
I just have, how many of these did you say we had, 40-some?
It's 46. On my last count, I may have double-counted a couple things, but I think it's about 45 or 46.
And Dr. Miller's already said it, but the only thing I'd like to kind of underline is, if you say you're going to do it, you're really expected to do it. So it's much better, I mean, this is one place where less is more. And even though I can understand why we have 46, I wonder if we really, really need to have one that's, you see, this is what's like that, and so on. Second thing I would say, and I don't know how to go around it, we keep identifying the Associate Vice President of Strategic Planning and Innovation. God forbid the Associate Vice President of Student Planning and Innovation falls and breaks his leg between now and March, we are in, we are in big trouble.
I'll do it with a limp.
But what I'm saying is-
Identify the office, maybe?
I think it'd be better to say the office. I think throughout, it would be better to say the office of that. So if for some reason, we need to beef that office up, or something, so, because when we say the president, we mean the president, all the areas that report to him and his staff. I have no problem with that. But I think if we'd say the office, I'd feel much more comfortable.
Very good, we'll definitely, we'll definitely do that.
Yeah, you won't have to walk with a limp, work with a limp.
Ryan, you should take this, means you're going to get some help, so that's good.
Were there any other questions? No, okay, thank you so much. I want to thank the board for all of your input, and all of your support as we've moved through this process. Thank you very, very much.
And I just have to applaud Stephanie, Matt, the Planning and Priorities Committee, the Academic Senate, the leadership, everybody who's been involved in this. Dr. Corner, Dr. Scott have been instrumental in helping us get to this point, and everybody's work is truly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. President's Area Plan.
Okay, so in the interest of time, we can do a couple of things here. The plan is under tab M, and, you know, basically, I feel very good about the plan. In my opinion, it very clearly and concisely states where we are, and more importantly, where I think we need to go. It's kind of the clear beacon of hope, of the mutual understanding that we all have through shared governance, how we need to be more civil to each other, and all of this in relation to student success, and what we need to try to accomplish. When you take the President's Area Plan and the board goals together, and you crosswalk them together, and you have the milestones that are indicated within the board goals and the President's Plan, both of those become kind of a roadmap, or a north star, that leads us to the attainment of the educational master plan. And when you look at the board goals, and you look at the President's Area Plan, the two other areas at college, the academic and student affairs, as well as business and college services, they then craft their area plans based upon, the board goals based upon the President's area. And from there, the individual units within those two other areas create their unit plans all the way down to their program plans. So it is a very, very precise and clear roadmap, if you will, in terms of where we go. I think it's a bold and comprehensive plan. It will take time to fully implement, but I'm convinced that at the end of the three-year period, the three-year period being our board goals, which by the way, we will review on an annual basis, our faculty, staff, and managers will be able to achieve the goals that we've set forth in here. And if we are successful, our students and community will benefit in ways we can only hope to achieve. We can do this, and we will do this, and it really is a testament, if you will, to the ability of our college. So, because time is short, I can do one of two things. I can respond to questions, we can bring this back at the next plan, at the next board meeting, or you can send individual questions or comments to me as you feel appropriate. But it is a very, very comprehensive document. We will update the President's Area Plan, so that it is reflective of the changes in the board goals that were discussed earlier tonight.
Okay.
And so we'll make sure that everything crosswalks well together. And I have to tell you that, for the first time in a long, long time, I feel very good about having a comprehensive planning document that gives us something to really work from in a very, very positive way.
Thank you. Would the board like to just send in their comments, and this be completed?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I thought this plan was really excellent, and I agree with you, Dr. Miller. It's the first time in the time that I've been here on the board that I've seen all the plans crosswalked, and where they make sense. So thank you, and Dr. Corner, and the team for doing their work.
Trustee, we don't have to approve this, do we?
No.
No, this is just an information item.
I'm perfectly happy with it. If you make the changes, align it with the changes we made in the board goals. I think it's excellent, and it all fits together.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't particularly want to see it again.
Okay, very good.
If anyone has any other comments, you could write to the President. Do you have any other things to add tonight?
Very, very briefly, I just want to add, talk about a few things. You know, kind of a day in the life on last Thursday, 13th, I missed a lot of things. I missed the vets' breakfast, I missed the vets' memorial celebration, I missed the plaque meeting. I did get involved significantly in the FYE pathways, programs that were going on, and Brandon Skyhorse's McDonald's of Echo Park presentation, and working with over 2,000 students who participated and made presentations and what have you. But the point is, is that there's so many things that are so great happening at this college, it's impossible to go to everything. So my apologies to the veterans folks, who I couldn't be there, and certainly to the President's Latino Advisory Committee, although we had a very good agenda for them, and it worked out well. Then just this past weekend, the Adelante Youth Alliance was here, celebrating the Adelante Young Men Conference. I want to thank trustees Brown and Waugh for participating in that. This is an amazing convening of over 1,500 students here. Stella Murda runs that operation. The themes are education, workforce training, giving back to the community. Incredibly exciting stuff. That same afternoon, I came back, and I actually was able to do greetings at a Chinese Film Festival, of all things, co-sponsored by PCC and USC. Two Academy Award-level Chinese directors were screening their films here at PCC. They haven't even been screened in China, and they were here first, and it was an amazing opportunity to spend an hour and a half with that group and view some of the film. We're truly a 24/7 operation, a true community work resource. On Sunday, I was here working, and I had the opportunity to thank the incredible PCC Tournament of Roses honor band, which is 239 members strong, of which 100 are PCC college musicians, and the balance for the best of the best in local high schools. It's an amazing tradition, their sound is great, and it was an honor and privilege for me to speak to them. And by the way, they will be seen by over 55 million domestic viewers on January 1st, and upwards of 100 million internationally. And finally, I want to say, and this is very, very important, I want to give sincere thanks to the Academic Senate- thanks to the Academic Senate, President Cairo, Dr. Levo, and the faculty and staff for completing and submitting with all the necessary signatures our student support systems plan, SSSP plan, which will bring about another $2.9 million to our students this year. The process was a little bumpy, but it was a good, healthy process. It resulted in a better plan, and I want to thank President Cairo for sticking to his guns, and I also want to thank Dr. Levo and others for being so responsive. It was a good example of shared governance in action and a good outcome for all. So, longer than you wanted, President Fellow, but there's a lot of good things happening here, and that ends my president's report.
You know, you're speaking of films, you know that you have a professor here, Munchi Young, who's a very award-winning cinematographer. As a matter of fact, I've hired her at Fullerton.
I didn't know that.
She's very good.
You have great folks, thank you, sir.
Okay, we're going to now go into shared governance. Again, these are announcements. Jordan Orozco?
I'll try to just be really brief here. Tomorrow, associate students, along with BSA, Black Student Alliance, as well as the Ujima Club, are throwing a solidarity event in response to police brutality against African-Americans. Professor Jimenez West will be speaking at 12, I believe, or 12:30, and we will be having it from 12 to 2 right here in the quad. You can come by, get a free t-shirt, and just show your support for our event. Also, oh gosh, I had something else. Oh my God, it's leaving. I'll just go to my last report, and I just want to give an extent of thanks to the students who served on planning and priorities this semester, Hubert Tran and Ryan Liu. They dedicated their time and effort, as well as Marshall as well, to accreditation and making sure that it got pulled through successfully. And I would like to thank Steph and Matt specifically for making sure that students were heard. So, thank you.
And I'm very happy to note that you'll probably be joining me at Cal State Fullerton in the fall.
Stressing me out, but I'm applying for transfer to six different colleges, so yeah.
President Fellow, Mike?
Fullerton's one of them.
I apologize, there's one important item that I did neglect to mention. Thanks to the good work of Dr. Corner, Dr. Douglas, and several others, this college is being honored to be one of the few community colleges in the country to be invited to a White House College Opportunity Summit on December 4th and 5th. And I'll be honored to represent the college in that manner, but that's very significant, looking forward to a lot of opportunities that that might present to us going forward. Thank you, Dr. Corner and others, for making that happen.
Grazie la carangella. I love your name.
You can have it, how about that?
I won.
So we will call you Grazie la?
Carangella.
Good evening, trustees. On behalf of the Classified Senate, I would like to inform you that we're in the process of planning regular town hall meetings for classified staff. We're hoping that this would help in order to disseminate information to the staff, as well as discuss any issues or concerns that may arise periodically. In addition, we're facilitating classified appreciation outreach activities this week, again focusing on facilities, the Child Development Center, the Community Education Center, and the Rosemead Site for our classified staff. And lastly, we've had our regular meetings with Dr. Bob Miller, and on behalf of the Classified Senate, we would like to take this opportunity to thank him for his support with classified staff and in our classified staff activities. So thank you, Dr. Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cairo, Academic Senate?
Today at the Senate, one of the items that we discussed at length, well, we discussed today, were the policies that I spoke to, that Dr. Mann asked. The Senate, they ended up, after some discussion, they ended up tabling the manner to the following meeting, and they went ahead and divided up the policies amongst themselves so they can provide recommendations for the following meeting. But the conversation did take a turn to focus on a policy that currently exists, and that's in regards to the selection of the president. The main, two main concerns, the first one is that there's a tremendous lack of faculty representation, so they did have a major concern as to only why, there's only two. There's also the issue of there's no union representation. And finally, it was mentioned by some faculty that we're not sure if the process that is currently underway for the selection of the president is the same one used for the prior two presidents, and the feeling was that if it is, then we're probably going to end up with the same result. But I think it's more a question of we don't know if the process that is currently being used is the same as is in the past, and a suggestion is that perhaps some sort of communication can be relayed to all employees and stating, informing everyone as to how it does differ from the previous one, and I think that would create a lot of buy-in by everyone here on campus if we could know how it differentiates from the previous to the present. We, the executive committee attended our plenary session, our fall plenary sessions in Irvine, and the best way I can put it is that we always come out empowered, gain a lot of knowledge, and one of the items that we learn is that, as you can see, one of the issues with this accreditation report and other reports is that there's, it seems like there's a lack of timing in terms of how much time individuals have to sign. So what was provided to us in terms of information is that perhaps the board of trustees can create a timeline for all reports that need to be signed by shared governance, so that we begin at the end, and then we work forward so that everyone has sufficient time to read the reports, make the necessary recommendations, and then ultimately obtain a signature. But we felt that was a pretty good suggestion, that it comes from the, ultimately from the board of trustees, since we're all involved in the signing process. In regards, another issue, there was a very good workshop on diversity, and it wasn't just diversity of culture, diversity of gender, it also, one of the points that really struck us was diversity of opinion. And we truly believe that if the board would grant more shared governance opinion, to have more diverse opinion, I think ultimately the end result of the policies or solutions that the board has might end up being better. So diversity of opinion is, was very important there. One thing that was mentioned today that we also learned is we are in complete agreement with the idea of having Brown Act workshops. We ourselves found out a lot of things about the way we run our committees, and we found ourselves that we woefully lack in information regarding the Brown Act, and not only workshops, but perhaps a Brown Act training for all individuals participating in committees, and I think that will ultimately lead to a more successful and streamlined committee work. And then a question was, perhaps it can be answered later on, in regards to candidate orientation, what questions pop up is whether or not this would be required or not of all candidates. So maybe somewhere down the line, that question can be answered. And finally, while I applaud the idea of trying to obtain a diverse faculty, I don't know if it's possible. The procedures, the mechanisms in place for the hiring committees does not allow us to select an individual based on ethnicity. I don't know how we can get around that, but while I do applaud the idea, when it comes, having served on many faculty hiring committees, or various hiring committees, there's no way legally to skirt that, and we have to follow the procedures in place. And ultimately, we have the faculty, the employees that we have on this campus as a result of the procedures in place. So if we want to go a certain path, the mechanisms, I believe, need to be changed. But I don't know if this is something that is a policy of the college or of the state in regarding that. Oh, and one final thing in regards to the accreditation report, what I did see in there is the word participatory and both shared governance. So once we, through the college council, we agree, I don't know if it's necessary to be uniform and just insert the word that we all agree upon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Douglas?
Thank you, I'm here to both share and participate. I'm not going to remind you about the holiday party that's December 9th in this venue from 9 to 11, because I already did that. But I want to give a shout-out to one of our students, Isis Uraina, who was an intern at Cal Poly last summer as part of the East End Program, and she's now presenting a paper at Cal State Fullerton on Saturday, the Southern California Council on Undergraduate Research. And if you're there, look for the one that's titled "Investigating the Effects of TDS Nitrates and Antiscalein on Algal Productivity When Cultivated in Brine Water."
I'll be in the front row.
We'll all drive down, David.
All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. President Miller has something special he wants to...
Yes, we, some of you may be aware that a former trustee and longtime trustee member, Jeff Baum, was named to the presidency of the California Community College Board of Governors today. So as a result of that, I would like to alert the board to something I'm doing, and then hope that you will ratify what I did at the next meeting, which is, we are going to develop a special commendation for Mr. Baum, recognizing his accomplishment, thanking him for his time here, and then recognizing him for his accomplishment as being named to the presidency. So with your permission, we will finish this up, we'll get it nicely framed, we'll take it down to the CCLC with us. As the board president or the vice president, whoever is there, we will ask them to maybe to give this to Jeff at the reception at the Sunnyside, the Annenberg facility on Friday, from 4 to 6 is the reception. In order to make this appropriate, though, we'll have to agendize it for the next meeting, and then I would ask the board to ratify this action.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't give it to you sooner, but I'm impressed that we just talked about this this morning.
Right. Well, this is Mary and our public relations staff, so we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lewis?
I just wanted to clarify that that last vote where you said I voted in the affirmative with the ratification of that contract, I didn't.
Okay, fine. Nothing, Dr. Sellers. Ms. Brown?
No report.
Feeling better?
Yeah, I'm going home.
Ms. Wa?
Okay, just wanted to remind everyone who's going to the Renshaw Mirage Conference on that Thursday, the Asian American Caucus will have their kickoff of the caucus at 1 o'clock, and then on Friday at 11 o'clock, we will be hosting the workshop on the disaggregated data and the impact on the API students. So whoever's going to go there will come over.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I attended a really interesting presentation this morning by Dr. Glendon, if that's the right way to pronounce it. I can't, I'm a Midwesterner, I can't hear other languages, but anyway. And she's from the University of Texas, San Antonio, and she talked about, you know, ways to reach out to first-generation students. One of the things, and I only got to hear part of it, so I don't know what happened in the second half because I had to leave, but one of the things I found most interesting and also of very deep concern was she showed students that had been interviewed at the University of Texas, and they asked them who had influenced them, who had helped them stay in school, what had been the factors that had determined that they succeed, and there was also discussion of the people sitting around the room, who had influenced them, what was the one person that are individuals. And what I heard, and some of the people were there, family, my family was there, they helped and supported me, student services programs, La Ponte was mentioned, Ujima was mentioned, EOPS was mentioned, Chicano Studies was mentioned, but what was not mentioned was my English teacher, my history teacher, my biology teacher. And I was very, very surprised that all these people and all these students said the main influence on them was not from the faculty. So, Mr. Cairo, I think this is something the faculties, the Academic Senate might really want to consider, maybe look at that work, if, I don't know, there were some faculty there, and there were very concrete suggestions of how to reach out to these first-generation students and to make them feel wanted and to validate their experiences. And as I said, I found it really shocking. In fact, the only person that I heard saying, oh, it was two teachers I had, was me. And of course, I'm from a very much earlier generation than those young students.
They didn't mention the board of trustees?
No, they did not mention the board of trustees.
Thank you very much. I just want to wish everyone a very blessed Thanksgiving, and this meeting's adjourned.